Good morning and welcome to the February 10th, 2023 City Council Budget Retreat. We have a robust agenda before us, but before I turn it over to our city manager and his staff, I want to welcome my colleagues, city staff, and the public who are here with us in this room. I'd also like to greet all those tuning in online now and anyone else who may watch it on video later. I'd like to also thank you, our staff, for setting up this event today. It's quite a production and we really appreciate all of your hard work. Like I said, we have a big agenda ahead of us and I, for one, am eager to listen to the presentations and engage with my peers and city staff about them. For a couple of us, it's our first city council retreat, but with that being said, I know that a retreat is a time where we come together as a body, roll up our collective sleeves, and listen, learn, and engage in order to make something better. In this instance, our city, the best city in the Commonwealth of Virginia, Lynchburg. I'm so excited, and with that, Mr. Bendah, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, good morning, Mr. Vice Mayor and Member City Council. Very excited to be with you today. I'm going to run through the agenda. There's going to be an introductions. We are here in Human Services on 9th. I don't know the address, but I asked Assistant City Manager John Hughes to introduce our Human Services Director Preston Sellers, who introduced some of his staff. And later today, if you're interested, 11:30 is about the time that we're going to break for lunch. You can take a tour. I don't know if you've been in this building at all or recently, but I know that it was rehabilitated within the last few years. I don't know exactly which, and so it's a beautiful building and has some pretty scenic views. But with that, I'll kind of give you an overview of the agenda. Today, you can see there, we have several items, and like you said, Mayor, it's a robust agenda. So I want to also say thank you to City Council. You're taking a big part of your day, and I know that this isn't your first or your crucial employment, but I know that you are concerned and interested in our city, and I just thank you for your time today in that. So with that, we have the overview of city programs and services. We, in advance, gave each of you some program cards, and it was just to help define what core services. This was an exercise that in Norfolk, when I was there, I did with my peers. And collectively, there were four deputy city managers. I was chief deputy, and amongst us, there was 100 years of municipal service. And I'll tell you, we didn't agree on what a core service was. And I'll tell you, there's no right or wrong answer. It's just, what are the thoughts about what that looks like? And so I appreciate the efforts that you took. Greg will kind of walk you through some of the, you know, the responses. Again, no right or wrong answers, just kind of help us understand or level set a core service and what that might be. And then, under Topic 2, Analysis of the FY 2022 Unassigned General Fund Balance, we're going to walk through. The number that we've talked about is $60-plus million. And where does that go? And how does it work? And what are the, you know, the words like surplus and unassigned and how that were? And so we adopted last week some financial policies, and how do those kind of measure into that kind of overall conversation? So we'll go through that. And then, and this is less maybe for City Council and more for just in my year. I realize that I'm a year and a half in, here in Lynchburg, and I love it. But the conversation about our surrounding counties and us and what makes us similar or different, so we're going to get into that a little bit. And then Jeff Bandi, our city real estate assessor, here in Lynchburg, every two years we look at, we do a buy-in and reassessment. And so we've seen unprecedented values and/or sales here in Lynchburg, and what kind of impact that has on the city, and what are we going to see percentage increase, and what does that mean for the overall real estate? And so Jeff's going to walk you through. He's going to show you a house that was bought in 2019 and sold in 2022, and just the increase. And that's not with doing anything other than maybe opening and closing a door as far, no new kind of sunroom or what have you. It's just, I forget the sale he calls it, but it's like just one of those fresh sales. 2019, 2022, it's really kind of interesting, and we tried to get one of those sales from everywhere in the city, not just in one area. Then, like I said, we'll have lunch. Lunch today, all the things that you will partake in or eat is something that can be purchased with SNAP. And so we're here in Human Services. There are great services that we provide that help our city, and we just wanted you to kind of understand what that may mean and what that looks like. Then after lunch, we have our financial advisor in town, Davenport. We've, Davenport, Donna, we've had Davenport since 2006 or so, or maybe earlier than...
2005.
2005. I missed it by a year, and she's going to keep me honest about numbers. So Courtney will be here. He's going to, last week, I talked to council through email. We went to New York and we went, I think it was one meeting removed. We talked about bond financing and getting our, you know, a credit. So we, Greg, myself, and Donna went to New York, and we went before S&amp;P's, Fitch and Moody's, and today, we should be hearing back. So fingers crossed, the city, Lynchburg, you'll hear that it has been a great fiscal conservative city as far as how that they make investments right, and it's really produced a great credit rating for us and what that. Courtney will walk us through and tell us what that kind of means. Then after that, structuring tax relief and thinking about the different levers. Mr. Vice Mayor asked to, you know, innovative, creative ways in which to provide tax relief. We want to level set kind of what taxes are and what their values and who they impact. And then the last one, this is kind of where we kind of bring all the stuff from today into kind of focus and look at how we build this fiscal 2024 budget. We have a couple weeks ahead, and usually it's April timeframe that we adopt. That's what we did last year, but wanted to start here with you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and City Council members to kind of say, here we are. You've asked me, your city manager, to kind of think creatively about this. I want to put some ideas ahead of you. No decisions necessarily need to be made today, just an opportunity to kind of help me understand how to propose and build the fiscal 24 budget. So with that, I'm going to pause. I want to make sure that we, I don't know if there's a Wi-Fi, or I think restrooms are pretty easily available. We have different refreshments and what have you. We are streaming live, so I want to thank the communications staff and IT staff and everyone who's made this possible. I know that critical for this council and for many city councils is making sure that we can get information out and show everyone what's happening. So it takes a bit of an effort. I don't, everyone can see at home, but it's comparable to a scene in Star Wars with all the technology that we have in here, and I use that specifically, sorry. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant City Manager John Hughes to make some introductions, and then after those introductions are done, we will get into the presentations. Thank you.
Thank you, Winter, and good morning to everyone here, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council, my city colleagues, and the public at large. Welcome to 99 9th Street.
Thank you.
The Human Services Building, here since 2003, as a matter of fact. I would like to introduce the Director, Mr. Preston Sellers. Preston has matriculated through the system of being an employee of Human Services and benefits to now being the Director. He's a retired Army, I don't know what your rank was.
Sergeant First Class.
Sergeant First Class. You don't want to get that wrong. I see all the military people looking at me like, do not get that wrong. But Preston will be here. He'll give you a quick overview of Human Services, and we wish you a productive meeting, and thank you again for coming to Human Services.
Thank you, John. Good morning.
Morning.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, city manager, deputy city manager, and assistant city manager, and guests. I'm Preston Sellers, Director of Lynchburg's Department of Human Services, and we are excited and honored to share our facility with you today. Before you dive into the business of the city, please allow me two things. One, to introduce my leadership staff, and two, just to give you a really quick overview of the Department of Human Services. To the back, April Watson is our Deputy Director. JT Smith is our Residential Administrator for Juvenile Services Complex. April Rowe is our Benefit Programs Manager, and Dana Wright is our Children's Services Act Coordinator. Human Services is one of the largest departments in the city with 222 full-time staff, and it comprises of the Department of Social Services and Juvenile Services. Social Services includes your public services, programs like SNAP, TANF, Medicaid, and others, your Family Services Program, your APS, foster care, and CPS, and then your Children's Services Act. So we currently serve 21,992 Medicaid recipients, 13,506 SNAP recipients, and 992 TANF recipients. Over the past year, our APS unit conducted over 500 investigations. Our CPS responded to over 1,100 complaints of abuse or neglect. Our foster care averaged 171 kids per month in foster care, and our Children's Services Act serviced 280 youth. Juvenile Services consists of the Youth Group Home, a 28-bed facility providing services to group, to youth ages 12 to 17. Last year, the Group Home served over 200 youth. The Lynchburg Region Detention Center is a secured 32-bed facility, ensuring the public safety by providing a safe, secure environment for our lawfully detained youth ages 10 to 17. And last year, the Detention Center served over 200 youth. I just provided a general overview of what our department do. At your request, I'm glad to provide more information if you request it. Also, I appreciate your time. I invite you to tour our building as the city manager said before you leave today. And once again, welcome. Enjoy your retreat. Thank you.
Thank you, Preston. Thank you, staff, for being here. It's really a great opportunity to hear from our Director and also meet his staff that do the good city business every day. With that, I'm going to introduce Deputy City Manager Greg Patrick. Greg has been here how long now, Greg?
Four months.
Four months. So he's hit the ground running. His son, Jack, sent me a good luck toy, but I can't keep it. I have to give it back to Jack. Jack's three, so thank you, Jack. Greg's going to walk you through the different presentation. There'll be somewhat the Greg Patrick Show a bit today, so rather than have Greg stand over here at the podium, I've asked him to sit here so that we can have a conversation with him. With that, Mr. Patrick, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good morning. Excited to be here. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, I look forward to working with you on your retreat today. We've got a lot of information to cover. I love the setup today. I feel a bit like I'm at a Senate confirmation hearing. I feel like I need an attorney next to me here to tell me what not to answer.
Greg, do me a favor. Will you pull your microphone just a little bit more towards you? So that, there you go. That better? That's great. Excellent. Before we get started, there's a lot of financial information that we're going to cover today. And a big thanks is due to Donna Witt and her budget and budget management team, Starlet Early and Megan Palmer. What they do with two people plus Donna half the time is pretty amazing. I had significantly more resources at my disposal in my previous position, but Donna and team do great work. So a lot of the information that you see here today was pulled together by them, and a real, a real thanks to that, to that team. As...
Greg, before, I'm sorry. What I ask council, as we get into these presentations, because they are going to be dense with numbers and what have you, I'd ask that you give Greg the opportunity to work through the presentation, and we're going to give plenty of time for conversation and engagement. As you hear something or have a question or something, write it down, and then at the end of the presentation, we'll get, we'll roll up, I think the mayor said something about rolling up sleeves. We will roll up sleeves and get into it. So back to you, Greg. Sorry about that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Our first presentation is an overview of city programs and services, and as a, as a budgeteer at heart, this is, this is very close to me. In working on city budgets, it became very clear that to begin any conversation around the budget, it is incredibly important that we know what we do and what it costs, because if we don't know those, that information, then really, these conversations with council end up being confined to incremental change. And it's really in the base where the magic is in the budget, and understanding what is in the existing base budget is extremely important. We asked the finance team to pull a lot of this program information together very, very quickly, and of course, if we had months to do this, we would be able to provide you information around the cost of each program, FTEs tied to each program. But even without that information, I think this is very important, very instructive information, and we'll dive right in here. First, the pre-work that we provided to City Council, as the manager said, there is no right or wrong answers. There were really a few reasons why we wanted to go through the exercise. One, for context, we have a number of new council members, and just understanding the breadth and scope of the services the city provides, I think putting it in, in this format really, really helps there. And secondly, there is, we had done, I've done this, a similar exercise previously in my, in my last, in my last career, and it was extraordinarily helpful in building the budget, thinking through kind of strategically where investments should be made if there's an ability to make investments in programs and services. And if the, if the flip side is true, where should we look for, for reductions? Because we want to make sure, more than anything else, that the expectation for service and the resources to provide those services are aligned. No matter what services, no matter what level of service you provide, if the expectations and the resources are aligned, then everyone's playing on this, and everyone is on the, on the same playing field. So first...
Greg, don't forget to click.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Manager. We will dive right in here. So what are we going to review today? First, a little bit of information on council's pre-work. We'll go through the results, and then we'll talk about any takeaways here. So first, especially for those in the audience and those who are watching online or will watch when we publish the recording, what is the pre-work we are discussing? Well, council received a set of 78 flashcards that each listed a separate city program or service. We only included those programs that were supported by the general fund. At the end of the day, these are the programs that compete for city tax resources. Some of our enterprise services, water resources, the airport, they generate their own revenue that supports their expenses. So from a budget conversation, they're sort of separate and aside from, from those services supported by the general fund. The front of each card had some basic program attributes. The back of each card asked City Council specific questions. First, do you, as City Council member, consider this program to be a core service? Second, if necessary, should this program be considered for a reduction in funding? And if available, should this program be considered for additional investment? And then finally, the services were divided into, it's really five priority areas, and then the support services, which are the programs that provide internal support to all the external, externally facing programs, public safety, lifelong learning, economic development, infrastructure, and quality of life. So here is an example of what one of the flashcards looked like. On the, on the left-hand side, you see the front of the, the front of the card. This program is accounting. It's a support service. It's a description of the program here. And then we wanted to make sure we captured whether or not the program had dedicated revenue, because at some level, if there's any change to the level of funding in the program, there's dedicated revenue there, there may be, there may be an impact. And on the back, you see the questions that we asked City Council. Priorities and programs, again, you see the priorities on the left and examples of programs on the right. These are fairly self-explanatory. So let's dive into the results. And we're going to do this at a very high level, and again, this information is extremely useful to the city manager and his staff as he puts together the budget. But if we look at the programs aligned to each priority, what you see is what you would expect at some level. 70% of the programs aligned to public safety. A majority of council thought of those as, as core services. 25% economic development, 37.5% infrastructure, a little bit less for quality of life, and then support services around, around 30%. So in the, in the aggregate, I would, I would say this is about meets expectations, and 70% for public safety, I think really rings true for what, what we've heard from, from this council. So what does that mean at the end of the day? Are these programs core services? These are the, I believe there's 29 or 30 programs here that a majority of council considered to be core services. We won't go through these in any detail. You've got the information in your packets. But again, you see kind of a wide breadth of programs here with a real focus on, on public safety. Should this program be considered for a funding reduction? Again, not going to go into detail on individual programs here, but the results are, are similar to the core service results in that very few of the public safety programs should be considered for, for a funding reduction. Interestingly, no economic development programs were voted to be considered for a funding reduction. 62.5% of the infrastructure programs, lifelong learning, quality of life, support services, you see them. You see the results there. And then finally, should these programs, should this program be considered for additional investment? And again, the results are very, are very similar to what we've seen, but the, but the reverse for additional investment to, to a reduction here. And again, kind of takeaways from this, and this is an exercise that, more than anything else, helps us as we think through preparing the budget, but there are no right or wrong answers. What's really important to remember is that residents experience the city through programs and services, not through departments, not through any other aggregation or agglomeration, but really, they experience the city through services. So it's important that we think of what the city does in the terms of services. Again, the scope and breadth of city operations and city council's oversight responsibilities are vast, and again, this really helps us as we, as we plan, as we plan the budget. So that is the, that is the first presentation, an overview of the results, and we'd open it up for any question or comment.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Vice Mayor Farrell.
Just for full disclosure, I've had an incredibly busy season in my life, and I've not been able to submit the full packet of cards, so to my colleagues, forgive me. Just incredibly busy with my work in Richmond. However, I will get them in by the, the end of business today, so hopefully those numbers can be updated.
Absolutely.
So with that, I need to submit them. So obviously, the numbers that you're having is kind of somewhat skewed, so...
If, in addition to that, I also have a question for you. And before I submit them, what I would like to see is, what are mandated services in addition to the information that was provided on the card? Where do we have an actual legal mandate to provide these services? And then also, what are the mandated levels to fund these services and the current funding for these services? Because I can't answer the questions unless I know what the government or state or local mandate is for these services, what the mandated funding levels are, and what we're currently committing to that.
And you're absolutely correct. There's incredibly important information. Quite frankly, in the, in the timeframe, the event horizon from when we started until now, there's, there just wasn't enough time to put that information together.
Totally understand. So I'll be happy to answer the questions about what I, you know, my personal position on these programs and services and departments and so forth. When I see all of that information, not just arbitrarily, hey, here's this department or here's this program or here's a service, what do you think about it? I want to see the actual information and dive into the numbers.
Absolutely. Mr. Missions and others, I'd also just, again, point you to the top bullet there. There's no right or wrong. And so, it just gives us an overview. This is informational, and less, I'm going to structure potentially a budget. It's reflective, I think Greg said it, it just, it helps me to understand just generally where, where your thoughts are on things. And what I hope it inspires with you is, it helps go, well, wait a minute. You know, I had thought or considered something as a core service, but now that I think about my definition of that, it stretches me a little bit. And so I, I'm eager to get your returns. I'd offer, I'll use these words because I can't think of any other. Don't sweat it too much. It really is just, I wanted to help kind of push us in a direction here to get you thinking, get the, get the creative thinking going for today, to give you some kind of reflection on what thoughts are and help inspire about, and maybe the takeaway there, there were 78 cards, and we didn't tie FTEs and/or funding to it, so Mr. Missions will work with that. But just, just all the things that your city does each day, I just wanted to make sure that you kind of took that away. So I'm eager, and we'll get you that information, Mr. Missions and others, and look for your results. But again, don't sweat it too much, and because I'm not necessarily going to use it as a technical component of building a proposed fiscal 24. It's more just helping me understand where my city council is. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'd also like to remind council members that needs to be recognized before they speak today. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just, this is a work session, so we're normally just freely, freely talk.
It's also a meeting that we need to be recognized before we're called on. Thank you. Mr. Patrick, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Thanks.
Oh, Vice Mayor Farrell.
Just envisioning, there might be some conversation on what was presented. I think there are right or wrong answers, at least from my personal perspective. I mean, the number one role of government, I think, is to protect folks. I think public safety, I'd be intrigued, once we all get our information together, if that was not a 100, I'd be a little intrigued as to how it's not. If you can go back to that slide, that should be really helpful. The percentages for, is it a core service? Economic development, I can, I'd be interested in that discussion. Infrastructure, I mean, it's constitutionally mandated in the federal level to do certain levels of infrastructure, so that's, in my mind, yes, absolutely. Also constitutionally mandated by the General Assembly, through the General Assembly, so that makes the lifelong learning tweak a little bit finicky. But yeah, I would say it's a core service, but it's implemented by the locality. So that's where the nuance that Councilmember Missions speaks to is a little bit interesting. Quality of life, how much is that our responsibility? I can see where that question could be hard to answer, just black and white, yes or no. What responsibility is ours to do certain things? Parks, yes. Offers aftercare services, not unlike Councilmember Wilder with, you know, that debate could be had and what that looks like. So I, I see where those things are applied in support services, the building we're in today. The umbrella is so massive, both federal, state, and local mandate, so I think there's merit to that, but specifically with public safety, there is a right or wrong answer. And with education, there is a right or wrong answer. To what degree do we go is, I think, where the conversation goes. So just since I hadn't offered my input, I wanted that to be submitted to help the conversation go.
To your point, Councilman, Vice Mayor Farrell. This is the type of exercise where what we're going to show you is roughly right, but exactly wrong. It is a, the points that you make, I think, are extremely important, and everyone around the dais may agree with some and disagree, and that's the, that's the beauty of what we're, what we're, what we're doing here.
And, yes, Councilman Henderson.
You know, back to the concept, this is a budget retreat. Maybe council, you know, as you opened and prefaced, time to roll up our sleeves and get to work. With that being the case, normally, when you have a budget retreat, there's free-flowing of information and free-flowing of ideas. We're talking, we're not pontificating and having a written speech that is gone there. So I would hope that you would reconsider that we just have it free-flowing, as opposed to only recognized, and obviously, we have decorum and whatnot, but the normal, the 20 years of budget retreats that I've ever been to, we talk. That's part of what we're doing, as opposed to saying, oh, I only can talk through the mayor. That stifles the rolling up our sleeves. That stifles the ability for people to interact. So hopefully you'll, hopefully the rest of council would agree and say, no, we just, we talk freely, obviously.
I appreciate your comments. I've referred to our parliamentarian on that, and we are going to run the meeting where I acknowledge and recognize each person for their comments. Thank you. Councilman Missions.
I would just like to let you add that, you know, like that decision effect has a chilling effect on our ability to represent the people. Thank you.
Okay. I appreciate your comments. Anyone else?
I'd like to make a motion to uphold that rule. I mean, this is...
Second.
Any other discussion?
Well, I have four, is a second.
Okay, go ahead.
I've been watching these budget retreats for many years. Never in my experience have I ever seen a situation where we had a mayor being the access point for the council members to represent the people and freely discuss ideas. So I will be supporting Councilmember Helgason's motion to appeal that.
Madam Mayor, normally on appeal, we see the rule, the matter of the ticket, we go straight to a vote.
So it sounds like what's on the table is, is to have somewhat of a, I guess, a free-for-all meeting versus an organized meeting where the mayor recognizes speakers and questions during the course of presentations. So what I would submit... So what I would submit is now council would just put it up for a vote if they want to do organized meeting, recognized by the mayor, and speaking and doing questions, they say yes. If not, they say no.
Okay, so the motion is that we have a free-for-all meeting.
Not free-for-all, it's a double word in my mouth.
Okay. The motion is that we have a non, what would you like the motion to be, Councilman?
What I'd like the motion to be is like we've done it for 20 years, like, like a former mayor, Adolin ran the meeting, where we're cordial, we have good decorum, we talk about things because sometimes something is stated and we talk about it. We ask a question, obviously politely. So just as opposed to more top-down, you can only speak. So just make it where we can actually work rather than kind of getting the blessing to speak.
Councilman Adolin?
I just have, I just have a comment. I don't know, I think that format is fine as long as council members don't monopolize the conversation. And that's normally what happens is people kind of drone on and on and on. And so people, you lose opportunity to really have some really good dialogue when people are going to call down to speak.
Right. And I would say due to recent meetings, the concern would be that in the interest of the respective people's time and how things might go over, that a more controlled meeting might be something we want to consider. So for those of you who would like to vote on a meeting where we do not recognize members to speak, we will vote in that manner. So are we going to raise our hands?
Just to be clear, if we vote yes, we are saying we would like to have a more open format in the meeting. If we vote no, we have to speak with being recognized. Is that correct?
If you vote no, then you'll be recognized when you speak today.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
I would have a question for the city attorney. Are the rules out of effect when we're a body joined together?
You all could suspend them.
So would we actually have to suspend the rules in order to adopt this motion?
Well, there's, there's still an effect because it's a special meeting we're holding for purposes of the presentation.
And my question is because this motion would amend our rules of procedure, how we would engage with each other today, would we have to first suspend our rules and then take up a motion about how to engage for today?
No, I, I think if everyone's clear on what they're doing, we're probably okay. It sounds like if, if, if there's going to be a majority no vote to do kind of a more informal discussion-type meeting versus a more formal recognized question and speaking meeting, it's, I think it's clear for everybody what they're, they're wanting to do. So as I understand it, like I said, with an appeal of a procedural ruling, there isn't really any discussion. So it sounds like the understanding of council is that if there's a majority vote for no, then the meeting will be more of a open format versus a recognized speaking format if it's votes yes. Okay, so if it's voting yes, it's going to be a recognized speaking.
No.
Okay.
For voting yes, it's going to be anybody can talk as long as they want to, as many times as they want to, for as long. If we vote no, then it's recognized to help control the length of the meeting.
Okay, well, then with that said, I, I would submit council could do a vote, just raise hands so everyone can see how you vote and let's move forward.
So raise hands. So we're going to vote now. If you're voting yes, it is to be non-recognized, anyone can speak in any order for as long as they want to.
And it's not.
As long as.
Let's call the vote. Raise your hand now if you're voting yes. Okay, there's three. If you're voting no, raise your hand.
All right, so the decision on the tables that will have a normal, organized, recognized speaker and questions during the course of the special meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if we may?
Yes, Mr. Benda, go ahead.
We're rolling into the next one here, the analysis of the unassigned general fund balance. This is an opportunity to kind of talk through the 60-plus million, kind of reflect on it with the, our, our rules, financial rules that we've had in play or that we actually recently adopted again. And with that, Mr. Patrick, over to you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, the next presentation is Manager Sed, Analysis of the Fiscal Year 2022 Unassigned General Fund Balance. This is the fund balance that's reflected in the city's financial reports that are effective as of 6/30/2022, the year ended 6/30/2022. An overview of the, the presentation, first level setting on a number of definitions to make sure we're all on the same page and we're all talking about the, the same thing when we're having discussion. Budgeting and a budgetary surplus, city council's financial policies, and then what are some of the uses of, of an unassigned fund balance? Then we'll break down the 66.4 million and we'll go from there. So first, definitions, the unassigned fund balance, this is the 66.4 million dollars that is in our financial reporting. That is the balance of funds in the general fund as recorded on June 30th that have not been assigned to other funds, not, have not been restricted, committed, or assigned to specific purposes within the general fund. Budgetary surplus, this is a, a different animal. Budgetary surplus is within a given budget year, a fiscal year. If we have more revenue than we do expenses, that is a budgetary surplus. That budgetary surplus ultimately feeds into the, the fund balance at the end of the year as it will fall to fund balance and become part of that fund balance. But if we're looking year-to-year budget-specific, a budgetary surplus is a surplus that's created within a, a given fiscal year. And then a surplus unassigned fund balance, these are the funds within the unassigned fund balance that exceed the combination of city council's reserve requirements and approved and planned uses. Because let's, it's important to keep in mind that when we talk about the 66.4 million, that is a point-in-time number. That number exists on June 30th of 2022. On the next day, because some of those funds were used in the fiscal year 2023 budget, that number looks a little bit differently. And we'll, we'll get into that as we go through the presentation. So budgeting and a budgetary surplus, again, kind of level-setting some of the, the budgeting processes that we as a city use and Donna and her staff use. We do not budget to create a surplus. So every dollar of revenue in the budget is tied to a service or a project. That said, we do budget conservatively because at the end of the day, we want to make sure we don't spend more money than we bringing in revenue in a given budget year. And, and this is, this is a good best practice. And budgeting conservatively typically leads to a budgetary surplus, which again, is a good thing. Some of the ways that we budget conservatively, we, we will include an allowance for uncollected taxes or fees, which is an offset to the low, to the, to the, to the revenue that we, that are budgeted in each of the individual revenue lines. We fully fund our personnel budgets. Right now, while the number of vacancies are, are shrinking, we know there are going to be vacancies in the budget, but we budget for a fully funded personnel budgets. Again, it is a way to be conservative and to make sure that the worst possible outcome has the smallest chance of occurring, which is spending more money than we bring in, in a given fiscal year. I think it's really important to remember, and we'll see some specific data related to this, but COVID, the pandemic really wreaked havoc on revenue projections, not just for Lynchburg, but, but everyone across the country. It led to large positive revenue variances and then higher-than-usual vacancy levels, which combined create much larger-than-usual budgetary surpluses. But going forward, as we, as we emerge from all of the, the COVID restrictions, we do expect to return to pre-pandemic norms going forward. So this next slide, we look back at 10 years of general fund tax revenue variances. This is in all the, the revenue that comes into the general fund, but these are your, your primary local taxes, the taxes that city council has, has control over. And what you'll see is if we look at the seven or so years prior to COVID hitting, we were seeing fairly consistent two to four and a half percent revenue variances, which is pretty typical, which is, which would be within the norms and best practices of, of budgeting. But then as COVID hit and especially the first, a kind of fully invested COVID budget, fiscal year 2021 and 2022, the world went a little crazy. And I think no economist projected what ended up happening. People couldn't, people couldn't buy experiences, so they bought things. And when people bought things, we saw sales tax revenue just absolutely take off. The, a recent legislation passed called the Wayfair ruling that allowed states to collect sales tax on online shopping, which also kind of combined with this had a massive impact on, had a massive impact on sales tax revenue. We in Lynchburg, like almost every local government, thought the COVID impact to meals tax, hotel tax was going to be significantly larger than it ended up being. And while there were reductions over what we would have initially projected without COVID, the amount of revenue generated was significantly higher than, than what we thought the COVID impacted revenue would be. And then in fiscal year 2022, and I'd have to check with Donna on this, but, but what we saw in my past life was not only did those revenues recover, they actually outperformed where we would have expected them to be had there been no COVID. And I think going into the pandemic, when, when, when everyone was building the fiscal year 2021 budget, no one would have projected these outcomes. And, and that's why you really see those large revenue variances in the, in the COVID So city council's financial policies, these are policies that have been in effect for a, a long time, recently reaffirmed by council at the last council meeting. These are the policies as they relate to the unassigned fund balance. The policy language is on the left, kind of a, a more relevant executive summary here on the right. What is, what is the unassigned fund balance provide for? It's, it provides for working capital and a rainy day fund. I think we all know with, with COVID, I remember sitting in a presentation in, on February 6th, 2020, with our public, the director of Norfolk and Virginia's Public Health Department. And COVID came up and they were asked, what's the impact of COVID? Should we be worried about this? This is early February. And her answer at that point was, no, you guys should be more worried about the flu than COVID at this point. A month later, no one was working from, from, from the office anymore. So we all know, we've all experienced something that we are not planning on can occur and we need to plan for that. Council's policies also set a minimum balance reserve of 10% of general fund revenues with a goal of 15%. And then balances getting to that 15% reserve with investing in pay-as-you-go capital needs. So if we look forward at kind of the, the, the first use of that unassigned, of that, of that reserve, the use as a rainy day fund, again, it can be used for loss of revenue, large unplanned expenses, natural or economic disasters, disruptions. A lot of times you'll hear about these called budget, called budget stabilization funds. Typically, one of the, one of the reasons you want to generate a small budgetary surplus each year is most of these policies, at least at the local level, are tied to a percentage of general fund revenue. General fund revenue typically will grow annually, which means to stay in line with those policies. The reserves have to grow annually, so they're typically funded, that growth with the, with budgetary surplus funds. You know, as an example, the state has established a rainy day fund. The Secretary of Finance recently came out and stated that he expected the combined reserves to grow to more than 4.3 billion by fiscal year 2024. I, I'm not sure if this considered any potential use of the rainy day funds, but this was his, his recent projection. And then I think we, I can't drive home the last point enough, especially coming back from three rating, credit rating agency presentations last week. The city's reserves are very, very carefully monitored by, by rating agencies. It is, our reserves and our fiscal management processes are one of the strongest items on sort of the rating agency scorecard that, that we have as a city. They typically, they're looking at reserves, they're looking at budget flexibility, they're looking at the wealth of the residents. And being that we are in a, a city that is impacted by higher education so much, those wealth levels look probably artificially lower than they should be. So one of the areas where we make up for that, we all know mom and dad's money spends just as well as money that you earn, but that's, that's, that's not considered by the rating agencies necessarily. So one of the things that, that we use to make up for that, that relative lower level of, of wealth and income is, is the reserve levels and, and our budget flexibility. One of the other most important uses of the unassigned fund balance is every year we transfer funds to, into the capital budget for use as pay-as-you-go capital. This is a 10-year lookback at the money that was transferred into the capital budget for pay-as-you-go capital. These are, these fund projects that are typically capital maintenance that ideally we would not bond finance. And over the last 10 years, we've averaged more than, you know, it's almost six and a half million dollars a year in pay-as-you-go capital. So without being able to use a, a fund balance to fund these capital maintenance projects, a couple of things would have needed to occur. Either we wouldn't have done the maintenance, which would have led to much higher expenses going forward in the future. We would have funded the maintenance, but had to find other areas in the budget where we were able, where we, where we needed to do less in either, in order to afford that capital maintenance, or you would have needed to raise revenue in order to fund both the level of service and that capital maintenance. If we had to fund capital maintenance out of ongoing operating costs, over the past 10 years, we would have been looking at anywhere between eight and 10 cents on the real estate tax. So being able to use surplus funds for this purpose has, has either kept the level of service where we have it now, or has, or has kept us from having to raise additional revenue in order to fund those expenses. And then finally, just breaking down the, the surplus and what, what the actual surplus unassigned fund balance is at the end of the day, and, and I'm going to get out of my chair here because it's hard for me to do this sitting down, but these are the numbers that we all, that we all know, 66.4 million dollars. If we look at city council's financial policy, I think, I think the, correct me if I'm wrong here, Donna, but the, the most recent number was 11.8%. 11.8% of updated revenues is 25.7 million dollars. If we go to the goal amount of 15%, that financial policy reserve jumps to 32.7 million. Again, council appropriated 11.1 million dollars of that unassigned fund balance into the fiscal year 2023 budget as pay-as-you-go capital. That's why it's important to understand the difference between 6/30/2022 and 7/1/2022. From 7/1, 11 million dollars came out of that reserve and went into the budget for, the 23 budget for pay-as-you-go capital. Council also approved additional uses of fund balance in the fiscal year 2023 budget to the tune of a little within 6 million dollars there. So where that leaves us is a Uh, so where that leaves us is, uh, a surplus unassigned fund balance, if you look at the current reserve level at 11.8% and the goal reserve level of 15%, that's somewhere between 21 and a half and 14 and a half million dollars. Prior to closing the books for our fiscal year 2023 budget, City Council will adopt the fiscal year 2024 budget. And in that fiscal year 2024 budget, um, again, we use, uh, fund balance every year for the last 10 years, as we talked about, and longer than that, for to fund pay as you go capital. We are looking at that number, uh, the requests and kind of the fed request that we've received thus far, uh, at about 12 and a half million dollars. If you take that money out of the, uh, surplus unassigned fund balance, those numbers, um, are reduced, uh, further. So somewhere between 9 million and, and 2 million dollars. The obvious question is, well, you're going to generate budgetary surplus this year. Why would you count that 12.6 against the 2022 unassigned fund balance? And the answer is, we don't have that money. And, uh, it is not a best practice to appropriate money that we do not get. Will we generate budgetary surplus that'll help offset this 12.6 million dollars? Yes, most likely. But again, if COVID has caused anything, it's that plan on the end of the line. So that's, uh, that's kind of a breakdown of that, uh, surplus unassigned, uh, fund balance there. And then finally, um, kind of takeaways from the presentation. City staff, uh, would recommend not dropping that fund balance level below the 15% goal in councils', uh, in councils' financial policies, primarily because, um, it, we, we heard from Chris Chamora at the fall retreat. We've probably all heard on the news that, um, we might, there's no consensus that we're heading towards a recession, but there is a consensus that we're heading towards a lot of uncertainty. And in periods of uncertainty, uh, it's always better to be more conservative than less. Again, reserve funds are a key metric tracked by the rating agencies and one where we score very strongly. 23 is tracking towards a budgetary surplus. And again, uh, if we follow the same logic and only appropriate funds once we have them, that will help with, uh, 20, uh, pay-go needs in 2025 and beyond. And, and then of course, there is, um, there is a surplus unaside fund balance reserve that could be used now for, uh, one-time expenses at council's discretion. And, uh, that is, uh, the end of that presentation. Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Mayor, over to you.
Can you say that differently? We don't have it yet. Can you go back to that slide and speak to that a little bit?
Yes, so. The 66.4 million dollars is a point in time number. And that point in time number gets recorded on 630, on, on June 30th of every year. It, it grows and shrinks depending on usage, uses, um, subsequent to its, uh, to its being recorded. The fiscal year 2023 budget is tracking towards a budgetary surplus. And that budgetary surplus will ultimately become part of the unassigned fund balance. But it won't become part of that unassigned fund balance until we close the books on fiscal year 2023, and it is recorded in our financial statements. However, council will adopt a budget in April or, or God willing, April. And that budget will use fund balance to, the proposed budget will include fund balance for, uh, pay-as-you-go capital needs. So if council approves that budget, prior to closing the books on fiscal year 2023, any budgetary surplus that we're tracking in fiscal 2023 doesn't yet exist because it won't exist until 630, council's adopting the budget in, in April.
So in, in other words, the notion of what this council does want to do, uh, offering significant tax relief, I say through the property tax rate. You, would it, I'm just going to speak directly to it. If we did it now, the dollars are not there in the, in those accounts to do that to the tune of 4.8 million or whatever the reduction is from the 1.3. Do you understand what I'm tracking at? I want to, I want to be crystal clear that the dollars associated with what a continuing request of some council members are is not feasible because of where we are in the calendar, in so many words.
I'll answer a slightly different question and say, I would not, a, a, as a municipal finance professional, I would not recommend reducing revenue without identifying the expenditures that we would also do, reduce in, in order to balance the budget.
So when you say you do not have the money yet, quote unquote, and a proposal's been thrown around to say, just don't send the money in at all, do we know for a fact 100% that no services would be impacted at all? Including public safety, for example? Yes or no?
We don't know that services wouldn't be impacted.
Because we cannot guarantee that all of the projections will be right as, and I, I mean this in jest, as the projections have proven slightly not as accurate in the last two years, given very varying circumstances.
That's correct. And I, I would, um, I would add that, um, COVID and the impact of COVID, um, I, I think has made people think even harder about that, those considerations in that we went a long time, we, we'd been 10 years away from the great recession, and it had been a long time since anything major unexpected had happened. But once you experience that, you become, you, you develop some scar tissue and, um, want to avoid at all costs, putting yourself in a position where you're spending money that we haven't yet.
So if we spend money before we have it yet, would I be accurate in saying that's putting the cart before the horse?
I, I think that is one potential way to look at it.
I want to be clear, I do want those dollars getting back to folks. But I do not for one moment want to have our lovely lady in blue over here having no salary come in because of a decision I make, or a teacher in Bedford Hills not have income come in. That's something I want to be very mindful of. So at least from my perspective, that's, that's where I'm, I really want to be crystal, like, yes, council could do what the proposal's been discussed quite lengthy debates on. But I want to know from a checking standpoint, checking account, like, if the money's not there, you're saying, don't have the money come in, and we have to figure it out on the backend.
That's probably taking it a little further than I would be comfortable going.
Sure, sure.
At no point would, would, would our police officers, uh, can't speak to the teachers as we, we don't control their payroll system, or any other city employee not receive their salary. We, we would have funds that we could appropriate, um, kind of in the rainy day fund, that, that we could use for that purpose to get us to the end of the year. But, but that being said, um, a, as a municipal finance professional, I, I wouldn't recommend reducing revenue in a current year budget without identifying the services and the expenditures that we would reduce in concert.
I have one final question, then I'd be happy to turn it to somebody else, Mattamare. Speaking to the Wayfair thing, that's a very, uh, interesting consideration. I've not worked through myself until this, this moment. If, if we're now getting online sales tax revenues for folks who live in the city and purchase on Amazon or whatever, it's delivered, if that's accounting for additional revenue, are we able to project that specific element of sales tax? Or is it all in one pot and we can't?
We can't. The state at some level may, might be able to suss those numbers out. But keep in mind, the Wayfair legislation occurred prior to the pandemic. What it real, what the pandemic did was supercharge the impact locally of the Wayfair ruling.
I don't want to get into that debate because I fundamentally disagree. It was our response to the pandemic, throwing money from the federal government back into people's pockets, throwing cash around, then all of a sudden inflation hits, and here we are, where the price of a hamburger is more, and now guess what? The government's getting more on the hamburger because I have to pay $5 as opposed to 3. So fundamentally disagree with that proposed, that, that premise. However, if we can somewhat project online sales as a specific component of sales, I wanted to flesh that out a little bit in some way because then that speaks to, we're, over the next five years, if the numbers just stayed the same, the logic would assume that you're going to get more in sales tax because you now have an additional component flowing into that pot. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, and part of the growth that we saw, part of the revenue variance, and Donna's back there, uh, going apoplectic, looking to be recognized.
I, I feel her going.
Let me finish my, my thought, Donna. The, the.
Use the metaphor of if we're taking buckets of water and putting it into a bigger bucket, we're now adding another bucket into the equation. That, that's kind of the process.
Right now, that bucket has already, is already filled to the extent that it, that it, the level to which that bucket is filled already accounts for elevated levels of online sales. So it's, it's already in the base, rather than being an incremental, an increment of growth that we can.
I guess I'm saying, looking forward, if we were to take just that stream, what does that look like? So don't want to dominate the discussion, but that's just some of my observations from, from this take. And thank you, appreciate it.
I just had a couple of things. It's really hard to sit over there and even reply, just, just going. To Chris's question before, the reason that I would say it would be really difficult to change a rate in the middle of a fiscal year is because Greg made the point that, um, whether you, the budget was adopted, and those revenues are tied to services. So therefore, whether you agree with it or not, um, they're still tied to services because that was the budget that passed. So it would be critical that if you reduced a revenue, that you identified the expenditures that, that needed to also be reduced to the same amount so that that budget remained balanced. So I think if, if you can look at it that way.
I do have some thoughts on that, but I don't want to.
Okay, and then, and then with the Wayfair Act, Greg's correct, and you kind of got to the point. We're getting there fast enough for me. But, but it's not, it's not that rates increased or anything like that. It's just that we get our pot. I always use the example, my husband only buys QU hunting gear. Okay, and it's, there's one store in Colorado. So we now get that revenue when he buys online. We've always gotten our Amazon money because there are distribution centers for Amazon in Virginia. But because of the Wayfair Act, we now get, um, revenue based on where you live and where you order from, even though the organization, the retail shop or whatever it is, does not have a distribution center in Virginia. So, just to make those points. Thank you.
Oh, you know what? I think I've gone too far, I apologize. There is animation in these PowerPoints that slow down that process, and it does not. Yeah, we're, we're getting there. This one, one more?
Budgetary and budgetary surplus. It's where you have how the increase in the adopted budget, there you go. Okay, so when we look at going from '21 to '22 fiscal year, you look at that, and obviously we throw out a term COVID, and, but part of going from '21 to '22 is that 4.8 million dollar real estate tax increase that applied fiscal year 2022. So we went from 7% variance to 10.6%. That's actually the three and a half percent. When you take the 4.8 and divide it by, uh, the previous revenue, that 4.8 million is right there, is why that variance happened. So now go forward two more slides. And plus, obviously, when we're looking at these actual revenues that are coming to the city, lots of it is based on inflation. When lunches cost 10 bucks, now it's 20. Our citizens suffer, the businesses don't have increase in bottom line, but who suffers is our taxpayers. Who doesn't suffer? The, the city government, who's getting money rolling in like everything. Okay, now go forward.
This is tracking variances to budget. The variances to budget.
What I'm looking, what I'm talking about is the actual revenue compared to the, then, the, from fiscal year '21 to the actual revenue fiscal '22. Part of that going from 144 to 147 came specifically because of 4.8 million dollar tax increase. Okay, now go forward another one.
So just, just to be.
Another slide, please. I know you've had your time. I, I got limited amount of time, and I don't want to be shut off, uh, if I'm asking questions or talking. Okay, when we look at this, we've had the policy set at 10%, and I think that's a, a, still is a good policy to keep it at 10%. Otherwise, every time we increase, uh, the, the general fund and the spending of the general fund, that means a bigger percentage has to go in the reserve. So keeping it at the 10% like it has been, uh, and that is what actually the fiscal policy says, I think that's a good thing. Okay, go forward two more slides, if you will. Okay, on this one, we look at the actual, you mentioned the 6.4 million average. Okay, so now we fast forward to the next slide that you have. I just got this at 10 o'clock last night. We got a 99-page document, didn't get it until last night, so I haven't had, uh, had a few minutes to go over it, but there's lots of things here. When I see this slide now, let me just tell you what it reminds me of. It reminds me of a magician's act in Las Vegas that takes this humongous elephant, the 66 million dollar fund balance, and does voila, 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 and all of a sudden it's a little two-pound cat, going from 66 million dollars to 1.9 million like that. That is critical. All these inputs, lots of people haven't been around, so they don't know what those inputs are. The first input is wrong. It's 23.1 million, according to the, the budgeted 2023, or 2022. That was 23.1 million as opposed to 25.7 million. The pay as you go capital would have been, if we'd done the average, 6.4 million. That's almost doubled. The real estate tax credit, the next one down there. I thought that was actually in the operating budget that was in, adopted in 2023. Now it's looking at coming from a, a one-time capital. The next item down, I'm not really sure what the water thing is, but now you have another one down, 3.3 million. A one-time operating expense. Operating expenses are not capital. I mean, this is one time, don't know where that came from. And this doesn't happen unless council actually votes to spend it. Now the first quarter adjustments, that one I'll give you. Okay, the first quarter adjustments, there's obviously every year we have first quarter, third quarter adjustments that happen in the budget. Sometimes more money comes in, sometimes less money comes in, sometimes grants come in, sometimes grants don't come in, and we make adjustments. That's part of the normal budget process. So we're down to, instead of 1.9 million, uh, leftover because it, the, the, the magic act of taking this humongous 66 million dollar fund balance and now bringing it down to 1.9 million, i- is, is the very reason why it needs to go back, at least a portion of it goes back to the taxpayers before it's all gone, vanished before thin air. Okay, so the next one, go to the next slide. So that right there, obviously, we got lots of issues with that slide, by the way. So lots of things in there that say, oh, we can't do it because of such and such. Chris kept asking about how much is actually in the, the account, and you obviously couldn't answer, uh, without telling the story, that there's 43 million dollar. answer without telling the story, that there's $43 million sitting there, over above the 23 million. It hasn't been spent because it hasn't been appropriated by council. Of that, easy enough to give back that totally unnecessary tax increase from your slide from before without cutting services, without doing anything. Obviously, as we're going to see coming up fairly soon, when we're looking at number three, four, the real estate assessments, the real estate assessments are going up 20 to 24%. Now we have that in the budget going forward. So the, the shenanigans that said, hey, we don't have $43 million sitting in cash over and above the unassigned, the, over aside the fund balance, hopefully it's there because council didn't appropriate it to go anywhere. Is it there? First question, the 43 million.
Let's go back here to this slide.
So the difference between the 66 and the actual, a council adopted 23.1 million, not over there.
11.1 million.
Scoot over to the, you're, you're jumping to the 15 and we actually adopted a 10%, by the way. It was 23.1, well, but it was 23.1 as opposed to 25.7. I don't know where you got that number. I have your document that you sent to me September if you want me to show unless that changed.
It was a budget.
Yeah, absolutely. That's what I said.
This is just taking 11.8% of the real, of what actually.
Okay, but that was.
This 11.1 million was appropriated as a transfer from fund balance to the capital program in the fiscal year 2023 budget. So this money is spent and allocated. In the 2023 budget. These items, and I can't speak to the process, but these items were also appropriated in the fiscal year 2023 budget and appropriated and, and used for operating expenses. So this has been spent or appropriated, these dollar amounts have been appropriated in the budget, so they are not available for use.
Okay, then let me ask you a question about what you answered. Councilmember Feraldi, a minute ago, you said that you can't spend the money unless you have the cash there. The 2023 budget was adopted in June of 2022. So you've already spent this money, because we didn't even know what the surplus, the, the fund balance surplus was until Donna sent this September 22nd of 2022. We didn't have it until the year closes out. So how did you spend this money?
These funds were in fiscal year 2021 unassigned fund balance.
Okay, so how does that reduce the 66?
This is a point in time. This, this number, what's the amount of cash that we had on hand, 630 of 2022, on 7/1, when the fiscal year 2023 budget is implemented, any use of fund balance has to be subtracted from this number because that's the one that's recorded on 630. This is a use of fund balance, this is a use of fund balance, this is a use of fund balance, and this is a use of 7/1. So these items immediately, along with the, the rainy day fund reserve, need to be reduced, need to be subtracted from the total unassigned fund balance. No?
The 25.7 million or 21 million, whatever.
23.1.
That's still sitting there. That's not gone anywhere. Then it's saying that by the policies the council adopted, that money, it has to stay there based on those policies as a rainy day fund. So it's, we're just saying it's not gone anywhere, you just can't spend it. So it's not available to be spent because that is our rainy day fund of whether you do 10% to 15%, whatever council decides. Okay?
And then, and then there, there's no obligation at, at all to spend that 12.6 million dollars at this point council hasn't approved it. However, it would follow with our past uses of fund balance if we appropriated a portion of pay-as-you-go capital. And, and these are the vetted amounts that my staff, that we've received in requests for, for capital management. And, and again, one of the best things, looking at the city's financials that we have done over the past 10 years is make a commitment to funding capital maintenance with cash as opposed to bond financing them. It, it, it has, it has been a hugely beneficial finding for us.
And so with that now, even if those numbers are fine, the previous was 6.4 million. We're, we're now looking at the ability to give back a little bit, that unnecessary tax increase that was 4.8 million, and you're already looking, so the option is, are we going to just spend it on doubling our 2024 pay-go even before the budget comes? Or are we going to actually give some back? Paying it versus giving it back are not even a cut to services. It's either having a capital improvement plan that's double the normal, instead of 6.4 million, it's now 12.6 as opposed to giving back the, the 4.8 million. To me, it's simple as can be. This looks like, again, how that money just disappears when government says, hey, we just want to spend it on whatever. And I get it, the next budget's coming up. And with that, that's why we have got to be extremely critical and not just saying, hey, we get to spend all this excess on however we want to do, on whatever pay-as-you-go to make a $66 million fund balance down to 2 million like that. That, that's just, that's rotten.
Mr. Patrick, a lot of things were kind of thrown at you through all that. I would like to see if there's anything else you would like to answer for in some of the previous slides that were referred to. I think there were some things thrown at you on the budgeting and budgetary surplus page. Anything else that you wanted to kind of respond to?
I, I think the important takeaways of this presentation is really on this slide.
Okay.
And, and that is, there are, there are some decisions that council will need to make around some of the numbers on this slide. The first is, where do we, what do we set as the financial policy reserve in the next budget? Do we keep it at 11.8%? Sorry, I keep walking away from the microphone. I know it's not, it's not working for everyone. Do we keep it at 11.8% or do we move it towards the 15% reserve goal? Number two, how much of that, how much do we use from this fund balance for pay-as-you-go capital spending in the fiscal year 2024 budget? That, that's really the crux of this presentation from a council debate, council budgetary deliberation standpoint.
Can I give you some examples for those of us who are new of some ways that we've used the pay-as-you-go balances previously? Things we've spent it on?
The, the pay-as-you-go is for projects that we would not bond fund. So when you do major building repairs, anything for carpet, partial roofs, painting, playground equipment, even in the past, we have cash funded culvert replacements. Generally, they're smaller items that I think is more conservative not to bond fund. They may last 20 years, but I think it's just more conservative to look at those and try not to, to increase our debt service for maintenance type projects. So that's normally what we use pay-as-you-go capital for.
Any other questions?
I guess if you can answer.
Councilman Higginson. Pardon?
The 3.3 million is predominantly the compression for public safety.
So how is compression a one-time operating expense? Is it, is it only last one year that's never to be done again?
Nope, I don't necessarily agree that this was the best way to fund that, but we funded it in the middle of a year and we used managed vacancy, which this is a balance sheet account. So I know you're a finance person, so you get, it's not, it does, that, this is where it all flows in and out of. So it was done as a one-time thing, knowing that it added to base salaries and we're going to have to find it in '24, but in order to make public safety whole and to help them recruit and do all the good things you did, this is how we funded that compression.
So now when we go back to that, to the fund balance, but then we look at back to what you talked about, the operating surplus, the budget surplus, there was last year, I think, a 16 and a half million dollar increase in tax revenue.
I don't think all that, I think that was the net. I think that was revenues minus the excess expenses.
You had 16 and a half million in increased revenue. You had six and a half million less in expenditures.
Okay, you remember that better than I do.
So that was about 20, about 23 million as well.
Okay, okay.
And so that was the delta, about 23 million between higher revenue because of inflation and because of the real estate tax increase and lower expenditures because of unfilled managed vacancies or unfilled positions, whatever it was, or less expenses, conservative spending, that accounted to 23 in the operating budget. So when you're looking at 23 million delta in that operating budget, giving back out of the 16 and a half billion revenue increase, giving back the unnecessary real estate tax increase out of that 4.8 million should be an easy no-brainer because not just taking it out of the, the fund balance, looking at that increased revenue. So 4.8 out of the 16 and a half million of the increased revenue should be easy.
And that's just the accounting of it.
I know that's the balance sheet, as you mentioned. The income statement portion would look at the, the, the surplus on the budget.
Keep in mind, that surplus, that budgetary surplus, that $23 million budgetary surplus is already rolled into that 66 million.
That 66.
So it's already a part of that 66 million.
Correct, because it's a balance sheet item and that's at the end of '22. So that falls into that, that adds to that balance.
So again, back to this, if we don't just automatically say, hey, we're going to change everything so we can have more in surplus, that way, which takes the 66 million and poofs it down to 1.9 million, because a lot of these little variables are slightly changed. Some of them are changed pretty big. We could easily have instead of 8.8 million at the end under the current 11.8, that could easily be 25 million if you actually don't just start increasing the amount of the fund balance as a percentage, you don't actually just say, hey, here's one-time expenditures, here's increases in last year's pay-go, this year's pay-go, and be plenty easy enough to give it back. Next year's budget, we have a humongous increase in the real estate tax assessments, which we're going to get to this afternoon.
Yeah.
Plenty of room there without damaging any level of operations. If you want to say, okay, next year you got this 24% increase, it's a lot in there. So I think we need to actually, at least as best as we can, make whole because this is clear. It shows we didn't need that tax increase.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick and Ms. Witt.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, oh, sorry, Councilman, Ms. Chins.
I've just got some questions and some, a couple of things I'm looking at here. So this question is primarily probably for Ms. Witt. So would you agree it's probably when we're looking at historical numbers, it's better to look at the comprehensive annual financial reports instead of the budgets, right?
Well, those are, those are a point in time and those are actuals. Budget is our best guess.
Okay, so, so when we look at the point in time historically and we look at the, like you just mentioned, what actually happened, going all the way back to FY17, and I'm not asking you to quote these, these numbers, but would it be, to the best of your knowledge, our revenue is typically over what we budgeted, correct? Because I'm looking at.
Yeah, due to conservative budgeting, that's correct. We, we make very conservative revenue estimates as well as expenditures.
And that's grown over time as well, that actual percentage of the revenue being over what was budgeted.
Not necessarily. Every year stands on its own.
Okay, well, when I'm looking at it here, I look at FY18, the budget showed for 184.7 million and we had 187 million actually come in. 19, 187 million, 190.7 million coming in. 20, 187.2 million in the budget, 192.7 million actually coming in. These are right out of the caper, all the capers. 21, 188.7 million, 197 million actually coming in. FY22, last year, the most recent comprehensive annual financial report, we had 197.1 million budgeted, our actual revenue and transfers in were 213.1 million. So when you look at that, we went from being 101.3% over with the revenues and transfers in, coming in, to 175%. So the actual increase in that variance has grown over the years. And you mentioned the, the COVID years, even before that, we were still looking at five and a half million revenue over budget. Then you've got to look at expenditures going out, and this one thing I will say, that, that it looks like the city has done a fairly good job of, of kind of not spending. And I, you would probably agree with that because I know you're kind of a watchdog on that, right? So same, same information when you look at the expenditures and transfers out. The budget in FY18 showed 191.5 million, actual 181.7 million. FY19, 200, 200.3 million, 186.7 million actually spent. The budget in FY20, 193.9 million, 184.4 million actually spent. 21, 188.4 million, 176.2 million actually spent. And then 22, the budget, 199.1 million, 188.8 million actually spent. So when you look at that, we're also not consistently not spending the money that we're budgeting, correct? I mean, you would agree with that?
And part of that is from excessive vacancies in the last several years.
Fair enough, but we have also said that those are still funded in the budget. We just don't pay for them on the expenditure side.
Correct, we budget at 100%. That's correct.
Okay, so then we need to consider what's the necessity of those vacant positions perhaps, right? If we're consistently not spending money on those vacancies and we're able to deliver the services, maybe we need to consider in some of the non-core service roles, what's, what's the necessity of those, those positions that are actually vacant? Not, not positions where people are actually performing services for our citizens and sitting in jobs and not in public safety, but some of those other positions. I know you sent me the managed vacancy list, I think, back in December, right?
Madam Mayor. Yes, there's some misses I have. And if you focus in and you'll remember the, the numbers and thinking about core, and I think I understand, not necessarily your pure definition of core, but what you're talking about, many of those vacancies are in police, emergency operations, fire and some other areas that have that uptake, because I can't remember the bottom number.
It was about 130-some vacancies and I think that we had 29, 24, 29 in police. Don't go against, I can pull it back up.
Yeah.
And then we had the graduation was about 10 recruits roughly.
13.
13, that's great. So, and then fire, we had vacancies that became fully staffed with 14 on January, so that still leaves us, not including fire and police, and then we have some vacancies, probably about 15 or so in, in emergency services. We're still at about 100 managed vacancies without even talking about public safety. So that's significant.
Your, your point is well-taken and understood in that we can look at those historical positions that, that haven't gone filled and where they are? Absolutely.
So, so that's just something I want to point out. And then I know that you had mentioned, you, you have something to add, sir?
Uh, Madam Mayor.
Oh, yes.
Only so far as you hit on a really interesting bit of budget philosophy here. And what I would, what I would tell you is we're, we're always going to have vacant positions, we just don't know which positions are going to be vacant. It is a conservative budget best practice to fully fund position budgets. However, with that said, there are localities that recognize that there will generally be vacancies without specifically eliminating positions that have been filled in, in, in a certain period of time, because those are two different conversations, right? Whether or not there is a need for position X, Y, or Z versus just understanding there's some transience in, in. So that is, there is a conversation to be had there around whether, whether you generally recognize that there's going to be vacancies rather, as aside from fully funding position-based budgeting. And, and that's a conversation that would be, that, that, that we'd welcome during budget development this year.
And then, and then on top of that, you had mentioned, I think, correct me and, and tell me, but, but you kind of pointed at that slide and you said that that 66.3 million was, was, was the cash in the bank, so to speak, but it's not the cash in the bank is kind of how you said it, right? Kind of, if you could kind of explain how you said.
That 66 million, based on a whole lot of accounting standards. Based on a whole lot of accounting standards, ways that we have to record expenses, there's a whole lot of four-letter agencies are involved here. That is what gets recorded on our financial statements as our fund balance position.
Correct.
Now, it may or may not be all cash. At some points in time, we have, we may have more cash than at the bank. At some points in time, we may have less, depending on the revenue and expenditure cycle. But again, this is, at the point in time that we closed our books, that's basically what looks like cash and cash equivalents. What am I saying that?
Well, and I would just say, your assets, which is your cash and your capital and all that stuff, minus liabilities, is your, is your fund balance. So therefore, that's not necessarily tied directly to cash in the bank.
And now, you mentioned assets and you mentioned liabilities, right?
Because we also have investments and we have so...
Cash, cash equivalents.
There's a lot of things that go into that.
All those things. So, so with that, right, when I look at what you're representing here is just the, the fund balance, also go back to the CAFA, right? And when we're going to actually talk about the city's cash and the city's coffers, right, we need to talk about all of it, right? Because there are cash and cash equivalents, correct?
Yes.
So those exist. So, so at that snapshot, at that point in time, at the end of the fiscal year last year, we had one-hundred-and-thirty-four million cash and cash equivalents, right? So, so when we're going to talk about the city's coffers, we've got to consider the whole picture. And then you mentioned the assets and liabilities, right? And then we've also got to think about the city's net position and all those things. The asset-to-liability ratio for the city has grown over the years. Is that correct?
Yes.
And anything over a one is positive, but we're way over a one because we're, we're doing well.
And I would just add that at the snapshot that the act for takes, our comprehensive annual plan...
Yes, ma'am.
Is at June thirtieth, which is one of our highest points for cash and investments. Because our last due, big due date is June fifth, which is personal property due date. We don't have another major due date until November fifteenth, which is our first real estate. So of course, we have other, we have sales tax, meals tax, all those that come in. But as far as the two biggest revenues is personal property and real estate, they come in June fifth and November fifteenth. So during that period, you've got, you gotta pay payroll, you've got to, you know, we have all that money going out. We have debt service, we have big debt service payments over the summer that eats up that cash. So it's very important that I have a lot of cash on hand and invested at June thirtieth so that we get through...
Absolutely.
The summer until November fifteenth. So you are looking at a very high point of our assets.
But, but...
Our liquid assets especially.
But, and liquid is what we can spend. So to, but to look at this and to say that this represents the city's cash is not accurate.
No, that's...
Is that correct?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to point that out, that this does not represent the cash in the bank for the city.
No, no.
Because there's a lot more that goes into that.
And you better hope there is.
Absolutely. Because that wouldn't be enough.
I mean, you have a different conversation if it wasn't.
And I think it would be, it would be interesting to see a historical summary, maybe going back to like FY seventeen, of how the city has done with the growth in those cash and cash equivalents, right? Because that has grown significantly over the years. And also, the city's asset-to-liability ratio and our net position.
Okay. Okay, I know we have an hour, less than an hour to get to lunch, and we have two more presentations, so if it's okay, Councilman Huggelson?
One question on a different topic. So if you can turn the page, and this is something that I think we should kind of talk about. If you go to the next page. So when we're looking at this, our policy has always been ten percent and a few years ago with a goal of increasing it, okay? So let's now kind of think about that delta or what we have to do to get there. You guys just said you were in New York, you met with the bond rating agencies. Currently, what is our bond rating right now?
With Fitch and Standard, fours were a double-A plus, and with Moody's, we're a double-A two.
Okay. So going from, you know, what you have here saying, oh, you know, it'd be neat, is if we could get to a triple-A. So going from a double-A plus to a triple-A would be then the highest rating. So in order to do that, what I've heard for a few years, and maybe true, may not be based on the bond rating, obviously I know it's true that the bond ratings agency said to you, let's look at the delta and what actually transpires if we have to go from ten percent to fifteen percent. That means we're putting away a whole lot more in the city's reserves that can't ever be spent because it's a rainy day fund that can't even be spent even if it's raining, right? It's the fund balance that we don't go below if we change it to fifteen percent. So now let's look at what it would cost the city. So what you would do is look at what are the thirty-year bond rates for a double-A plus? What is the thirty-year bond rate for a triple-A? Obviously, it's going to be slightly lower, which would then be a little less in interest expense. Do you have any idea what those current interest rates are now?
I don't, but Courtney Rogers will be this afternoon.
Do you have any idea what the delta would be?
And I would say, to your point, to go from a double-A to a triple-A, you're going to get some savings. To be downgraded, you're going to pay a whole lot more. So it, but the delta going up is not as much.
So the, and that's what you've always talked about, that we've had a great credit rating, credit rating because we paid on time, we've done things, we've been... And so this, with the original, since I've been around a long time, I remember when this was first discussed, that it said, hey, if we go to fifteen percent, maybe we can go up. So the question is, how much of a savings is it going to be? Are we going to go from a three-point-seven-five percent interest rate to a three-point-eight-five percent interest rate? Or, I mean, a three-point-six-five percent interest rate? That would be good to know those numbers. Then council can actually look at the big picture policy saying, you know, do we really want to lock up another ten, fifteen, five, twenty million bucks sitting in, in the, the fund balance of the minimum of ten percent versus now the maximum of fifteen percent? Is there really a benefit in the hopes that we may get a triple-A rating? That would be good to know those numbers. I think that would help us very easily rather than the ethereal conversation that just says, hey, it'd be neat to do it, right?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Huggelson, good news is that Courtney from Davenport will be here this afternoon, and so maybe as early as this afternoon, we'll have some answers for you.
Good. Thank you. And I think that is, that's, again, we changed corners, but that's one of your slides. And so that is, rather than just the saying, hey, let's do it, let's kind of recognize why. Okay, thank you.
Great. Okay, we're scheduled to take a little break before our next two presentations. So if y'all want to check phones, use the restroom, we'll go ahead and, how many ten minutes do you want to take?
Uh, I propose, Madam Mayor, ten minutes.
Ten minutes?
So come back at, what is that, ten fifty-five?
Ten fifty-five, okay. Thank you.
Just managing expectations is for, we're kind of, we're running a little bit behind, but that's okay. We have two presentations before lunch, and we can make up or make up some time too as, as we move into this. We want to make sure that we give appropriate time. We've, that, you know, eleven-thirty stop is really to give you a chance, if you'd like, to kind of run around, see the building. So we can move into that if we, if we need to as far as the presentations, because we don't want to give anything short shrift. But I think with this next presentation, with Greg, kind of the comparison between city and a county, that'll move rapidly. And then just before lunch, we have our city assessor, Jeff Bandy, here with us. And with that, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it over to Mr. Patrick.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more with me. Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you again for the opportunity to, to be here today. As, as the city manager mentioned, this is a presentation that, that a, a lot of you are going to understand inherently. We often hear a lot of conversation around, you know, Bedford County's doing this, Appomattox County's doing this, Campbell County's doing this. So this is an opportunity to briefly, and I'll be quick, run, run through just some of the, the differences between being a city, being a county, what it means from a, from a historical standpoint, what it means from a funding standpoint, the way the state funds a city is very different than the way the, the state funds a county. And I, I hope it will help structure some of your conversations going forward. One thing I will add, there's, there's a, there is no right way to interpret the information in this presentation. It may tell, it will tell different stories to different people. But at the end of the day, there, there are some differences, and we'll kind of run through those here. So again, just a level set, some general differences. We'll, we'll compare some select characteristics between Lynchburg and some of those surrounding counties. And then we'll look at comparative spending in a couple of key areas, and then, and then some takeaways. So general differences between cities and counties here. Cities are typically, and this is across the state, the economic, arts, culture, medical, educational hubs of their given, of their given regions. Cities have a, generally provide a higher level of service than, than counties do to their residents. There are, as, as I said, significant differences in state funding. Cities typically have higher levels of concentrate, concentrated poverty than counties. These are, this is a, a legacy from a lot of decisions that were made a long time ago for the urban core cities across the, across the state, really across the country. And that requires a higher level of support for our vulnerable residents. This one should hit home. City infrastructure is typically significantly older, significantly more expensive to maintain. I think we still have some terracotta pipes in our water and sewer system out there. And then from an economic development standpoint, cities are more developed, Lynchburg is more developed than, than, than Bedford County, than Amherst County, than Campbell County. And what that often means is if we have a company coming to the region that is looking for a large tract of land or, then, you know, we have a difficulty, we have some difficulty competing there. Site prep costs, most of the land in the city, especially the developable land that commercial businesses would, would, would like to occupy, probably have some environmental issues that need to be addressed. That adds to the cost. So those are some general, general differences. So some select characteristics between cities and counties. Now, this is specific to Lynchburg versus Appomattox, Amherst, Bedford, Campbell County, basically the counties that touch us here. We are, size-wise, the average county is ten times larger than the city. We are about twenty times denser. So the population per square mile, we're about twenty times denser than the counties on average. Average single-family home price, now I will tell you Bedford County skews this a little bit. Lynchburg still has a lower average home price than Appomattox, Amherst, and Campbell, but a significantly lower average home price than Bedford County, which is around three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. Meeting household income, again, Lynchburg is lower than the counties on average and all of the counties individually. Poverty rate, you, you kind of see some of the, the impact of some of the legacy decisions that were made years and years and years ago. We do have a, a majority of the concentrated poverty in the region. And then taxable assessed value per capita. This is a really interesting metric, and again, one that can be viewed through many different lenses. If, so the, the value of the total tax base, real estate tax base, taxable real estate tax base of the counties divided by the number of residents compared to the total taxable tax base of the city divided by the residents, the counties are about thirty percent higher there. That means currently, based on our current situation, if, if the average county had a one-dollar tax rate, Lynchburg would need a tax rate of a dollar twenty-nine to generate the same amount of revenue per capita. So I thought that's an, an interesting lens through which to view that data. So to sum it up, we're ten and a half times, the counties have ten and a half times more land, we're twenty times denser, average single-family home is worth fifteen percent less, meeting household income is, is eighteen percent lower, we have eighty percent more poverty on average, and the, again, almost thirty percent lower taxable assessed value per capita. Now, comparative spending, I, I know there are a number of you on council that like data. If you like data, then I would encourage you to go to the Virginia Auditor of Public Accounts website and view their comparative report on local government. This is a report that has vastly more data than we're showing here and compares a ton of different aspects of local government operations across all jurisdictions in Virginia. And it is a grace, it is a great source of fun for me as a data nerd, but it's a great source of, of information out there. And what we're looking at here is per capita public spending by type. And you can see here, public works, public safety, health and human services, parks and culture, and overall, the city is spending significantly more per capita than, than our, than the surrounding counties. So let's look at that kind of individually. In, and this is all based on twenty-twenty-one audited financial reports from the cities and counties across the state. In public safety, Lynchburg, we spend about twice what the surrounding counties do per capita on public safety. Counties don't have police forces, we have a police force. Most of the, the county public safety is, is carried out by sheriff's departments, which are primarily funded by the state. On the fire side, most of the counties have limited paid or volunteer fire, fire departments. We are an accredited professional fire department. If we were to, to adjust our fiscal year twenty-twenty-one per capita spending to match the counties, it would result in a, in a thirty-one million-dollar budget reduction within our, within our budget. There's nuance in there. Some of the funding in our budget comes, flows through the state for sheriff's offices. We, we get HB five-nine-nine funding for public safety. But at the end of the day, this is, these are how the numbers shake out. On the public work side, again, we spend nearly three times as much as the counties on, on public works. A lot of that is refuse collection and, and the way that we do road maintenance compared to the way that counties do road maintenance. You know, the city provides for a, for a, a fee that covers about a third of the cost. The city provides residential refuse collection. The, the, the city funds the, the road maintenance, though we do receive funding from VDOT for that. On the county side, you know, the, the county residents need to find their own waste management solution. They don't do bulk or brush leaf collection. The VDOT does most of the road maintenance in the county, so there's significantly, significant differences there. Again, we would see a big reduction in, in our budget if we spent per capita on public works what the counties do. Same holds true for health and human services. Our poverty, our poverty rate is significantly higher. That means the spending is significantly higher. We have a, a group home, we have a juvenile detention center, these are something that the counties don't have. So again, you can see the, the per capita comparison there. Parks and culture, we spend about three and a half times more on parks and culture than the counties do on average. We have more parks, we have more trails, we have more arts and culture offerings, we offer more programming than the, than the counties do. And again, there's a significant difference there, almost three and a half times more we're spending than the counties do. So general per capita spending, we spend thirty-six-point-six percent more per capita than, than the counties do. So some takeaways, and, and we'll get through this real quick, and we'll turn it over to council for discussion. We offer our residents more services, more amenities, and more programming than the surrounding counties. We're smaller, denser, poorer, with more vulnerable residents, and our infrastructure is significantly older. This is really the key. Cities and counties have their own unique, distinct competitive advantages. There is, there are, we have eighty thousand residents who have decided that living in Lynchburg offers the lifestyle that they like and that they, and that they want. The counties have populations who have made the same decision and, and, and live where they live. I would, I would, I would make the case that the, that the more we are able to focus on leveraging our competitive advantages and becoming the best Lynchburg we can become, the better off we are. That doesn't mean we don't learn from the successes of our neighbors, but we always need to remember that there are things that we do that, that the counties can't do. There are, there are aspects of being a city that makes us super unique, super attractive, that the counties simply don't have, and that's worth celebrating. counties simply don't have, and that's worth celebrating. So, with that, I'll turn it over to council.
Any questions? Councilor Haggis?
Can you go back to page five, or whatever on my, whatever that is? That, no, one more forward, one more forward. We're going to just look at, well?
Nope. Comparison of select characteristics. It's numbers. I mean, not numbers, right there, right there, perfect. So, I see this, and I know that that's your argument of, but as you mentioned, people see it differently. The way I see this, I think, is factually. So, as I read this, and I look at, you know, obviously, we do have, the counties have a lot more land, number one, totally get it. Number two, the population density in Lynchburg is 20 times greater than in the counties. So, for years, a long time goes on the planning commission, I've been on council for a long time, and a lot of the times, we've heard planning staff say, "We need more density. More density solves all problems." Apparently, it didn't. We're 20 times dense more dense, and when you say more dense, I'm hopefully that you're referring to the first definition of dense, not the second. So, okay, so that is actually, we understand that density doesn't solve our problems, so let's, you know, quit that fallacy. Secondly, the average single-family home in Lynchburg is worth 15.2% less. When I read these next four points, each one of those points points you to what's called supply-side economics with a bells ringing. It says, "Hey, guess what? You tax higher, the values are less. You tax more, the income is less. You tax more, the poverty is higher. You tax more, average per capita income is less." We've done this for a long time, and it's gone the opposite way of what we've could. I've been here a long time, and I remember Forest 20, 25 years ago, it was cow fields. Now, you have a half of a billion-dollar development that just happened not long ago. I mean, you have businesses thriving, the county out there in Forest is now, has their own water line because they don't want to be beholden and worried about what's got to happen. They want to have their own destiny. So, granted, and I appreciate you saying that, you know, sometimes these things happen a long time ago. Great, they happened a long time ago. Today's a new day. Today is our day. Today's our day to say, "Let's turn these courses around." Rather than having our property value suppressed by high taxes, rather than having income suppressed and where people are leaving the city because of the people with means that have high income, all of these are exactly true. The solution is not more of the same. The solution is opposite. Let's not do what we've done for the last 20 years, let's switch it as best as we can. Let's try to figure out how we can keep people with means to stay in the city. That's how we can keep lowering the burden on people to own a house in here so the values can skyrocket. I mean, there's lots of things that we can do. This tells a clear, clear message. You know, I know sometimes we get in the weeds and, "Oh, we spend a little bit more than this because of challenges and whatnot." But this is clear, and I think this is why we can, if we do make some changes, we can see Lynchburg thrive for the next decade. If we don't, but if we keep on doing the same, we're going to see these numbers next 10 years from now say, "Oh, average single-family home is worth 20% less than it was," as opposed to 15% now. Median household income is 22% lower. Let's stop these. These are stopped by having individual freedom, a little bit less government, a little lower tax rates, and allow these to thrive. So, actually can thrive for a next decade if we reverse course, so.
Is the assessor's presentation next?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to hold one question for Mr. Bandy. The question that I have, looking at this comparison of select characteristics statement question, I think that it's, we're not doing ourselves justice when we look at this if we're also not explaining the difference between what is mandated by a city versus a county, right? We are mandated in the charter to have a fire department. It's been here since 1883. So, yes, we do have a, we offer something different that way, but we're also required to do it. So, when we're having these conversations comparing the city to the county, we shouldn't be comparing the mandated things that are different that we have. We shouldn't, we shouldn't be without explaining that, that's all.
Thank you for the information. Thank you for the presentation. You know, one thing I always ask about the county of Lynchburg versus the counties, I see some of the differences, similarities when it comes to our budget process, when it comes to our schools, because there's such different dynamics. That's why I like to compare ourselves more so a lot of times to the first cities like Petersburg or Richmond area, or those other first older cities that have been here longer that weren't established like with Bedford County, more of a newer development, because the whole infrastructure and the person that lived there is just so different. One thing about Lynchburg with the poverty rate, that's really challenging. And with the poverty rate comes so many other issues with that, like the social services that we're in the building today, so many other issues with that, even in our school system, with having a high poverty rate, all kids receive most mainly free and reduced lunch because of the poverty rate in our school system, which brings a whole nother area of challenges. So, again, when you look at all the numbers, just the numbers, you obviously got to look at all the factors that come with that and considerations of that. And I think the last part you mentioned about each part has their unique qualities, whether you want to live in Bedford, there's more land, if things of nature have a larger house or more land, versus living in the city with all the great amenities, with all the great quality of life. You know, some persons prefer to live in, like in New York, you know, in a city where you have so many things going on, like in Lynchburg, where you have great quality of life, the parks, the recreation here, the academy, the amusement square, and you have amusement square, excuse me, you have so many people coming from the counties to benefit from the city resources. That's why we talk later about sales tax and entertainment tax or food tax, either of nature, that's got another conversation, and getting revenue from persons coming in using our resources. But again, it's how you prefer to live in a city that has resources, that has trash. I don't want to take my trash to the dump. You know, I'm glad that the city has those resources that we can benefit from. I was at a meeting Tuesday night in the Diamond Hill neighborhood, and the staff, the getting white staff came in to talk about the Diamond Hill plan, what they're planning to do. Again, the neighbors were all talking about, "We want to fix potholes. We have a serpentine wall that's crumbling or whatever, and we want that to be fixed." All the things they were asking for, there's a whole list, and they have a whole list of things they want done in the Diamond Hill area. Diamond Hill is 150-plus, my house is 150 years old. So, we have a lot of old infrastructure in our community, and Diamond Hill, they're saying they want certain things done, you know, so versus them living in a county, because it's different, where they don't have even sidewalks whatsoever. So, the qualities and the conditions of the county versus Lynchburg have so many different challenges, and in a city of the size of Lynchburg and the age of Lynchburg, you have a lot of different situations going on that's going to cause more infrastructure needs than like in a Bedford County, where there are new schools and more newer schools, because this kind of continue to grow there and things of nature. But thank you for the information, that was really helpful, appreciate it.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Patrick.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Moving on to the next presentation, so I'm looking at the clock, we're at 11:20, and we planned 30 minutes for Mr. Bandy, who's our real estate assessor. So, I'll keep a close eye on the clock, making sure about things, but also understanding there's going to be questions and what have you, so working with each other. Mayor.
Sorry?
Oh.
I think we're going to make a change. I think we're going to reform, we've got to amend the agenda.
So, sorry. Just kidding.
All right, all right.
The agenda says 11:30.
Someone like to make a motion to amend the agenda?
No, I'm kidding. Okay, all right, I'm sorry, I wasn't picking that up. So, Jeff Bandy is our real estate assessor, and you may ask, "Well, what does he do?" Well, he's going to explain what and who he is, and it's pursuant to state code. And Jeff has a team of people that help him value properties here in the city. And here in Lynchburg, it's twice, it's every two years that we do a reassessment of our valuations. And so, we, you heard from Greg earlier today on some of the impacts to our economy and to our growth and to our city because of different variables, not the least of which was COVID. And Jeff is going to show you across the city how and what those impacts look like, the percentage increases because they did go up. I know that Mr. Patrick recently bought a home, and he came through that process and understands that we were lending a couple of years ago at about 3%, and now it's higher in those low percentages and valuations and other things. And if you're thinking through these valuations, some of this is also, just go in and knock it on your neighbor's door, because Jeff's going to show you some purchase or sales that were 2019 and then 2021, I think, and it's percentage increases is quite formidable. But with that, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Bandy.
Thank you, Winter. Good morning to council members. Thank you for having me. Sorry, I'm sorry, got it, okay. Got it. Yeah, I just want to give you a quick overview, basically, perhaps for some of the newer council members, the process would be helpful, why we do what we do, and then the actual numbers, and then some, a bit about the review process for property owners. Okay, our mission statement is basically prescribed by the city, state code, 58.1, chapter 32. You know, everything is kind of specified, what we do and why we do it, why we do a biannual reassessment, who does it, when we do it, the valuation process, the issue of 100% of market value, that's a state mandate, how we present our land book, the public disclosure of documents. It's all mandated by the state, so that's why we do this thing every two years. Colloquially, we call it ad valorem taxation, which means according to value. The markets are dynamic, so you need to revisit the assessments, you know, every two years to see how they've changed versus the market. So, that's why we're out, that's why we're having this conversation, the law mandates. I should have mentioned more about fair market value, there's, you know, that's a big part of what we talk about, and there's several definitions. This is one of many, but basically, we're wanting to find out, we have sales, sales are what drive value, we use the sales to guide us in the assessments. So, anytime there's a sale, you know, we want to know if it's an arms-length transaction or a fair market value. So, this is the definition of what we, is it, you know, is it exposed to the market? Is there a willing buyer and seller? Is there no duress? Does it represent what a typical person would pay for that property? So, that's very important. You know, a lot of times, I've gone to houses that weren't listed and knocked on the door, and they're going, you know, and say, "I wanted to verify your sale," and they're going like, "What are you here for?" And, you know, I can certainly understand their confusion. You know, when we don't have a listing, we're going to go, you know, we're going to go out there and talk to the folks and see if this is a valid sale, we need to put in to the list for consideration of the neighborhood, or not. So, that's why we do that. Some key dates, the notices will go out by Monday, the 27th. This is what we call the administrative review period, where you can actually talk to us, the appraisers, if you have a question about your property. The deadline is March 31st for that administrative review period. If you miss that, you have another deadline, which is June 30th through the, with the Board of Equalization. That's a group of real estate professionals that own property in the city that's appointed by the circuit court judge. So, you could also, you could talk to us, and if you don't want to talk to us, you could talk to them. Getting into the real part of the matter, the reassessment, you know, last time we valued was 21. Taxable real estate values increased from 6.3 billion to 7.5 billion, and everybody, I think, unless you were in a cave, saw that, how crazy the market's been since COVID, basically, that things, you know, kind of taken off, and they continue to appreciate, and so I'm following the market, and this is what's happening, a 20% increase overall. We, how we value, we value very much like a fee appraiser values, but we build the valuation models not for one property, but for a whole universe of properties. Typically, it's a whole neighborhood. And three approaches they use, and we use as well, is the cost approach, that's the sticks and bricks kind of thing, like a contractor would give you the cost to build a new home, that's one way we value. The other is the sales comparison approach, that's the one we rely on the most. It's like we look at other houses similar yours in the neighborhood to estimate your value. And then finally, income approaches mostly limited to larger income-producing properties. We look at all three approaches for any property, but we mostly use sales comparison for residential, income-producing for larger income-producing properties. I'm sorry, if you have any questions along the way, by all means, just let me know.
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
So, the title of this says preliminary, but you're getting the phrase specific, so is it preliminary or is it? What's the preliminary word for?
It's, when we put this out, I had not posted the values in the system. I am, as of today, finishing it up.
So, it's not preliminary in the fact that it's going to, the numbers are going to change?
Not dramatically.
These numbers are there, and they may change with the Board of Equalization or appeals, but?
Yes, this should be a fairly accurate depiction of what's going on.
From your office.
Yes, yes, sir. Good question. Yeah, taxable properties representing 7.55 billion, you know, let me speak to that. Yeah, seven, I have the numbers, the final numbers here in front of me, and it is 7.558 billion, so that's correct. And the exempt was slightly less, it's 2.47 billion, not 2.5. So, the overall is 10 billion, not 10.1. So, a small variation there, but yes, good point. Commercial properties, I guess some folks thought retail was dead. Now, retail is doing quite well, and it's come back nicely since COVID. There's lots of other things going on, but commercial values went from 1.59 to 1.76, a 10.5% increase. One way we do commercial properties is the income approach, and we send out income and expense surveys, and we had a 37% return rate this time. Kind of typical of, what we're doing is we're asking, what are your rents, what are your market expenses, what are the challenges you're facing that we may or may not know about, so we can consider that. I really didn't get a whole lot of data from the survey, but it's required by law, and plus, it's factual data, and so that was just the return, I just want to let you know that. We do ask each property that has an income-producing property about their actual particular operation. Industrial values are doing quite well, up 23%. Again, survey rate was fairly low, and when we count a return rate, even if they return the survey and say, "We're owner-occupied," so a lot of this data would be not, probably not particularly useful, because they just said they're owner-occupied, but no data, but anyway. Multifamily, as you well know, is a hot commodity, there's lots of growth going on, and we've had some sales recently kind of broke all records in the city. I think the highest one, we had the West Edge property, I think it sold for like 66 million, about 225,000 a unit. So, there's clearly strong demand for multifamily property for various reasons. We followed the market, and we raised the value 23% overall, multifamily. I guess it goes back to the fact that housing, single-family housing is expensive, so more folks are looking at apartments, and that's driving up the rents and therefore the prices. Single-family also, you know, there's a shortage of supply in the city. It's interesting, I, Community Development had a meeting with the local builders, and there was a couple of realtors in the room, and it's interesting, they said basically, folks like parents from Liberty are coming, and they're coming a year ahead of time to go buy a house or townhouse for their child or themselves. You know, they're looking at properties a year ahead of time, and they're still not finding anything, there's just not enough product out there for the demand. It's just, it's really revealing how, as we as a college town, it drives values. Overall, single-family values went up 24 and 1/2%. And again, there are some supply chain issues still, a lot of it's been resolved, and then there is a shortage of labor. And then finally, we really are running out of new developable land. Greg alluded to that factor, we're smaller than the counties, we're running out of land. So, the supply and demand imbalance, I think I've talked to that with some of you before, it's really driving prices up. Let's see, did I go too? This is just kind of an appreciation map, superimposed awards on top of it. I know some of you like the statistics on the awards, and I'll be glad to get those for you, I just didn't have them when we first put this out. You can just see, it's fairly evenly distribution, and this is just residential properties, but a fairly even distribution from 20 to 26% appreciation. from 20% to 26% appreciation for the assessed values all over the city. So everyone kind of enjoyed the appreciation, if you want to look at it that way. This is kind of revealing the, just the median, single-family detached price, the progression from, you know, 20 to 21. I see, I think I did figure the deltas, pretty revealing. For example, from 20 to 21, the value, the median value, this is assessed value, not sale price, went up 9.19%. From 22 to 23, it went up 26.86%. The same kind of appreciation is occurring for townhouses. The market seems to be, have a lot of strong demand for townhouses, so they're providing a lot of those. And because the supply, you're getting more new product in there, the actual median values are going up because of all that new product coming online. Our condo market's very small, but it is, now condos are becoming popular, particularly downtown. And this is kind of the, they really took off from 22 to 23. We said, had some really high-end condo projects come downtown, and that really drove the median prices up. A good way to figure out the actual appreciation in a given neighborhood is what I call a sale resale. And this is just a sample, just maybe it's anecdotal here, but these are just houses that were bought and nothing, there were no permits, they just bought them, lived in them, and then resold them. And that's a great way to find out true appreciation in a given neighborhood, is by these sales, resales, that were just simply people lived in them and then they sold. It's just a, I know some folks ask, well, how come I don't have one in every neighborhood? And they have to be very clean, it has to be a true sale resale where there's no, if someone worked on the house and did major renovation in between, I can't use that to extract the true appreciation of the neighborhood. So these are simply houses that people lived in, didn't really do anything to, but resold in a few years, and it just shows you the appreciation on an annual basis, I figured out for different areas. It's just pretty amazing and very revealing. I'll just let you look at the data. And I think that one was the biggest annual appreciation percentage in Irvington Park. But it's just phenomenal, you know, 27% appreciation. I was figuring, you know, a minimum of 15% appreciation annually. This is Cornerstone. This is just a nice house in Sandusky, went up 17% annual appreciation. Nice house, Vista Acres, 20% annual appreciation. Nice house, beautiful, really cute house, unbiased, in Fort Hill, went up 16%. Another house in Fort Hill, almost 16%. Another house, well, in Westover, near Lynchburg, University of Lynchburg, 12%. Chestnut Hill, 18%. So that's that. And finally, the administrative review process. We're doing things a little bit differently this year. When we send out the assessment notice, you'll have the change in value, and the state mandates what that looks like, the front of the notice, it shows you two years and the current year. And it'll show you that you could have the comparison of taxes. And then on the back of that notice, we're going to give you the relevant sales of that, your neighborhood that we looked at. It's not maybe, it's not, we can only fit 30 sales on the lit, on the back of the page. So there's up to 30 sales on that back of the page that we used to looked at, to come up with your assessment, or at least guide us in your assessment. So that's a good place to start looking to see why we did what we did. Another good resource is the, our product called Parcel Viewer. A lot of folks are familiar with it, some are not. You know, as all the sales occurred all during the last two years, generally, we're maybe two days behind from when the clerk's office gives us the sales, and we put those in Parcel Viewer. So anyone could go to their property in Parcel Viewer and put in their address, push a button, Neighborhood Sales, and it would give you the list of all the sales in the neighborhood. So it's a really good resource for you to look at. You can even download it to Excel. And I'll do an information session later on with Kerry and the communications folks are going to set up something where I will actually go through our training session where how you can do advanced searches in Parcel Viewer, and you can just cross-check and see if what we're doing looks reasonable. The main thing I would say, today, go to Parcel Viewer, look up your property, and make sure your mailing address is correct, because that's where we're going to mail the notice. So if it's not correct, either give us a call, or there's a form, or address change form that you can, you know, fill out electronically and send to us, so that we get the notice to the correct person. By all means, do that. When you're looking at your assessment notice and compare it to the neighborhood, you know, we have all kinds of data out there. There's a sketch with a finished square footage, the acreage of the lot, a photo, a sketch. Look at all of that and see if it looks correct, because, you know, we could make an error. And so we want, we put that stuff out there for you to look at, to see, hey, does that look right or not? And then, you know, finally, there's, you know, how does your home compare to those sales on the back of the sheet? Does it look like it's following the line or not? The other thing we did different this year is we have a landing page on the city's assessor's website called 2023 Revaluation. It's like you click on that, it's like every, it has answers, you know, question and answer sessions where you can ask different things you would wonder why the assessment office does what we do. A lot of those answers can be found there. There is a link to a electronic review form if you want to ask us to review your property. Oh, in addition to the notice, there is a paper review form inside the notice, if you just want to fill that out and mail it to us. So there's lots of tools available to you to, if you have questions. We're always glad to talk to people and tell them, you know, what's available. The beautiful Parcel Viewer is, it's, we're open 24/7 there. You can go out on the web and find anything you want about your neighborhood or surrounding neighborhoods. Sure.
Certainly. Not directly on topic, but I think it's worth bringing it up. We recently had the discussion about Tarianna. That's our open space. I really, really think that if we're going to start talking about, okay, maybe we do need more density, maybe not, if we need development of single-family and we want to go to the city, I think that could be a sweet spot of where we really want to focus our efforts about, that's the next area. Just an observation, because I mean, that's where we can build. The other's not a lot of infrastructure there, and it's going to require a lot of investment to build it. I think that's a, that's a fair thing we should all look at. And I think it's also something we, if we did it right, we could certainly all get behind. Just an observation.
Sure.
You know, that's, that's a lot of property that we could do something with. So, you know, recognizing the historical nature of what that part of town is and what we need to maintain, I think that's really something we should explore. As far as the assessments and increases, cue back, do back to the slides of the one where we had the different percentages of parts of town. I think that was very enlightening.
Oh, the math?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. Did I go too far? I think I went too far. There, sorry.
I found this interesting, that Sandusky area and southeast of Lakeside had seemingly the lowest bump, but it's associated with the right-hand side of Ward 2. Just interesting observation. I don't know if there's a rhyme or reason. Could you speak to that maybe?
I feel, I feel late.
Aye.
To a large degree, whereas the 4-0 area is older, and we're seeing lots more folks renovating homes there. I think in Sandusky, because of the age, is they're 30 years newer or 40 years newer, just now that folks are coming in there and renovate those homes, and it's kind of that one. I think over time, you'll see the same kind of appreciation or more there, but it's maybe they're at the earlier end of the cycle. Yes. I was intrigued as well.
I think this, this really helps. I'd be curious, generally speaking, what the equalized rate would be, just so we can just have a ballpark about where we're looking at that. If you had that, that'd be great. I know the numbers are still to be like...
They're, they're still in flux.
But ballpark would be nice.
It's, it's somewhere around 92, 93, doing the math, but like, can I, can I get back to you on that to give you the correct answer?
If, if it's 38, all of a sudden, we're having a very different conversation.
No, I don't believe it.
But it's not. Do we see, again, numbers aren't finalized, do we see a change in how much ascent on the rate would be?
I think that's still about seven.
Matt Mayor.
Sorry.
Absolutely. So we have, I don't know if we have the cards available, but we have, I don't know if they're in the front, so they're in the front. So all the different percentages for fiscal '24, there's a handy-dandy card that we've created that shows the value of a penny and a number of different things. So a penny in fiscal '24 for real estate is $750,000.
Yeah. And I did see it, but I wanted folks at home to know that I was there. So thank you, Mr. Manager. I think that's just very interesting. I think that opens up the conversation for where we're going with the budget retreat, so I commend you all for finding a way to keep the conversation going to where this council wants to arrive. And I'm certainly open to finding out what varying things we can do to ensure that the 4.8 in total million from a few years ago finds its way back to folks in the most effective way. And so that card will be very helpful for me as I make adjustments to things I've already put out there and hopefully work with my colleagues to find the best proposal forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. On this, the interesting thing, as we to note, is like on page 12 and your other items, so I don't know if you can get to that. Yeah, like that, backup one.
Sorry.
So when we look at that, you know, so the average, I think you had, or maybe you didn't. Well, on some of these, you had the average, that was like 11 and 3/4% average increase from 2020 to 2023. But the reality of it is, the first few years weren't much of an increase. It's heavily weighted towards this last year. And this last year, we all know, because of, as you mentioned, supply chain craziness, things that happened and...
True. I think the market took us by surprise in '21. We, we, it really didn't take off until the second half of '21, and we had already basically finished the reassessment by then. So we were really kind of behind the wall there, and the catch-up has been over the last two years.
If we utilized all four years, the average is 11 and 3/4% annual average return. If we'd only take those first three years, it's like four, it's less than 5%.
That's right.
Maybe, because it's really heavily skewed at the end.
Yeah, it does.
The one thing now from this, you know, granted, assessments are going up and everything, one thing that I kind of noted, I just made my own little spreadsheet based on some of the first questions or items that you had, with regarding the different categories. So one thing interesting of note, I believe, is that we have less, right, backup one more to the commercial. We're going to have less commercial property as a percentage than we did last year.
Of the base?
Of the base. Last year, we're at 25% of the city property was commercial.
Right.
This year, we're at 23%.
Yeah, single-family, multifamily are skewing the bases.
It's skewing it, but it's also what helps us to get folks out of poverty. You talked a second ago about the 80%, higher than the counties. Jobs, education, not having kids till you're married, those three things. Obviously, that's how you get out of poverty. Having jobs are critical. And if we're actually shrinking the actual value of commercial property relative to the total, that's not a good thing. And maybe that would be an informed policy for us to say, when we get later on, to say, maybe one of those big taxes that are really kind of bad, ones that are inhibiting commercial growth, inhibiting our businesses to thrive, is to start looking at the one thing would be that B-Pole tax. I know you had, we'll have that later, 10% is a million bucks. But a way that we can actually, rather than having this shrink every year as a percentage, going from a quarter down to 23%, that's a big percentage difference in one year. So that tells me something, that we need to really kind of focus a little bit more on what we can do to keep jobs, what we can do to help our businesses, so people can work. So.
Yeah, just, you can say right here, kind of interesting points that Councilman Hulston made. Recently spoke with somebody who owns a business, and they decided to start their business last year, and it's not starting a business per se, it's a pretty large business in another region of the state, in Campbell County, because the barrier to entry to start a business in Lynchburg was just way too high. So that's a commercial investment that we're missing because of high tax rates. People are choosing to start businesses elsewhere that have the cash to do it in the city. They just won't do it because it hurts the bottom line. So when we look at, if you can go back to that map, please?
Sure.
And thank you for putting this map together. The map is super helpful, and I really appreciate it. If you look at the bottom corner of that in Ward 3, right below the 26% Vista Acres, obviously, that's, that's where I live. Something unique about that neighborhood and some of these neighborhoods on the, on the outer lying parts of the city, is that I have neighbors that live in Campbell County, because this was part of the 1976 annexation, and they didn't scoop up all of it, right? So when I look at that, I know that neighborhood, fairly well, I lived there. I looked at a similar house in RGIS and Campbell County's GIS just a few moments ago. And I got rid of the crazy COVID years and all the hyperinflation. So I'm looking at the assessed value from 2011 to 2019 on my house and on a house just like mine in the county, on across the county line. Okay? So with our high tax rates in the city, my assessment increased 0.6% from 2011 to 2019. But a almost identical house across the line in Campbell County increased 18.3% in assessed value. And I just wanted to point that out because that demonstrates how these high property tax rates are actually suppressing wealth building in the city of Lynchburg. I look at Ward 2, and we spoke about this during the break, Mr. Bandy. And one of the things that I'm curious to see is, where are home sales in Ward 2 falling in line with the assessed value? Right? So compared to other areas of the city, are these high tax rates preventing those homes from appreciating and building wealth, generational wealth? Everybody would agree that real estate is a way to build generational wealth, right? And making it harder for people to build wealth in the lower-income areas of our city, because the tax rates are creating a barrier to entry for home buying, and they're also suppressing the values of the homes. So it's just something that I want to think about, and something would be interesting to see how similarly situated houses right across the line from the city are increasing exponentially in value versus what they are in the city, and with the property tax rate, you know, if you look at supply-side economics, how that's affecting that.
I'm really looking for response, but the only part on the Campbell's side is they only value every four years, so just kind of...
That's why I picked two years, where there were, I picked 2011, we had an evaluation in Sooner Campbell, 2019, they had a reassessment, and so did we.
Yes. I'm thankful for the presentation. Information was very helpful. I thank you, appreciate that. I have several takeaways. Well, one is that over the past 20 years, we can see how the, the value of our city has increased, because of all the investment that we've made in our communities, so the values have increased. Also, we see our population increase over the past 20 years. Whereas like in 20 years ago, 2000, it was like 65,000, but now it's like 87,000. So we have seen the value, the, the population of our community increase. So people not like, actually in our city, we see more people come into our city. Another takeaway, you mentioned about Lynchburg being a college town, and that drives a lot of things. We have one of the largest Christian university in the country here in Lynchburg. So that also has a major effect on our community. And you mentioned something about, I think, maybe with some developers of some sort, were they talking about single-family homes? What was that conversation again?
Yeah, it was a combination of just, we were just talking to developers about the comp plan for going forward and what, where they thought, you know, growth should be. And it was just a realtor saying, you know, there's so much demand for housing that Liberty University parents are looking for homes a year ahead before their child comes to school in order to find enough stuff, because there's not enough product out there for them to buy. It was just very interesting and revealing, you know.
Again, as I mentioned earlier, I was having a conversation with developers just to see what would encourage them. Because ever since I've been on city council, we've obviously seen more apartments being built and of that nature. And when the developers' comments has not financially feasible for them to do single families, it's better for them to do multifamilies or townhouses or apartments. So I'm always interested in that conversation, having with developers, to see again what we can do to encourage them to build more single families. And again, Councilman Farady mentioned about Tarianna area, where it's definitely a lot of open space that we have, you know, doing that... of open space that we have, you know, the master plan, we've talked about that, some of, some of them want, some of them wanted to grow, some of them wanted to grow, it's kind of a little mixed, how some of the neighbors are. But again, that is the area, and we have some making some substantial investment to get all the sewer and all the things they need to be a thriving community, I think it would be helpful, so it's always something the city can always consider, you know, marketing and looking more into that, it's kind of directing people there, or conversation with developers, just again, long-term things that we can think about. Another thing, interesting, oh, do we have a program for senior citizens? I thought we, when it comes to assessments?
We, we have a, um, Mitch Knuckles, the Commissioner of Revenue, administers tax relief for the elderly, so there is that safety net. I don't know the particulars of it, but he, he'll be here this afternoon, he can tell you about that, yes.
And another thing, from the other presentation, we talked about the, um, in Lynchburg, there's so many, I guess, like nonprofits, like the property value, that was a big, another takeaway I've received as well, um, like from Centra, I hate to sing them up, but Centra, and also Liberty owns a lot of the property of our community, and unless it's, I guess, unless it's business, those education ones are not taxed. So, like hospitals, so a lot of our proportion of our property in Lynchburg is not receiving real estate taxes versus like a lot of property in the counties. That's a big, to me, a big difference as well in our community. But thank you for the presentation. Very helpful.
Thank you. Mr. Benda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dr. Wilder, Jeff was talking about, in pursuant to the City Council's request, that we get, get together with our developers. Kent White, in the last couple of weeks, convened, uh, two different groups, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, and had city staff there, and, and the questions about barrier to entry and why, why we're building more multifamily as opposed to single-family, what are the variables that they would say preclude them from doing that? And so we do intend in an impending council meeting to come out and give you kind of a, a takeaways and/or kind of, uh, the, the characteristics and/or the outcomes that they said in those conversations. Thank you.
Dr. Wilder?
And just as a follow-up to that, again, and we could also just continue, just for future thought, as we continue to look at that conversation, um, City Manager, as we continue to evaluate that, also, what programs are out there for, we talked about so much blight in Ward Two. What other programs are out there, whether federal program or others that we could do to get rid of some of the blight, or, or make it like, there used to be that thing called a dollar house, or some years ago, like 20-plus years ago, I don't know if that stuff even exists anymore. But again, how we can really, and home ownership, as, as Councilman Heckles has said, is so important that we look into, because it does change the dynamics of a family, it changes their future. So if we could just also make that part of the conversation too, how we could look to see persons in our NCT area can maybe purchase some of those houses? I guess the problem too is renovation costs.
Yep.
And how you can afford, I looked at a house for investment the other day, just the renovation cost, there's no way I can afford a renovation cost. So what are some resources that are out there for things of that nature, to try to renovate a house for a family who wanted to do that, who wanted to purchase a house, but can't afford to do the renovations? Just as we look at all these conversations, that persons who might be in poverty, but want to get out of poverty, want to purchase a house, but just, you can buy a house for whatever price, but just the cost of renovate it, I mean, when I looked at the house the other day, it was just, I couldn't, I wouldn't even try to tackle it.
Madam Mayor, if, um, Dr. Wilder, if you remember the fall retreat, when we had the collaborative come in, and we had, uh, Mr. White, and, uh, I can't remember, what was her? Sarah, I won't try to do her last name, but one of, thank you, sir. One of the opportunities, if you remember, was a housing trust, and, um, how do you position resources to leverage possible opportunity around investment in an area in the city or in a particular vein of, um, housing, housing market? So I may revisit that retreat and send for some of the newer members that presentation and some other things, and just as a refresher. But yes, we will keep laser focus on it. Thank you.
I remember that, thank you.
Mr. Benda, did you have a comment?
I just wonder, great points. I just wonder, we do have the real estate rehab program, and that, you know, that's out there so that, for example, someone buys a kind of a derelict house, and say, we put $10,000 on the, the property when they start the work, um, the rehab program, say they renovated, it's worth $150,000, that difference, $140,000, will be abated against their total tax bill for 10 years. So I just don't want people to forget about that. I think folks don't know about it. I put a video out there, uh, there's a video on our website to tell you about it. So I just, every time that someone pulls a building permit, the program is set up in a house that would qualify, a application for the real estate rehab program spits out with a permit. So we're, we're trying to get the word out there, it's just, it's, it's kind of tough, but, but just want to remind everyone, that's available.
Councilman Taylor?
Yes. Good evening.
Morning.
Do your assessment reflect the violence in neighborhoods?
You know, it's, it's always, um, sales are trailing indicators, you know, I'm looking at what's happened in the past. When, if crime occurs, if that drives down prices going forward, I'm going to follow the market up, down, or sideways, wherever it goes. If crime, great point, if crime does factor into neighborhoods where values are driven down, uh, you know, I will be following the, the market downward. So that's a, a great point and a, and a, something that we definitely, you know, that's a, a whole larger discussion which I'll deal with, but good point, yes.
I already spoken unless, uh, either of you would like to say something, but I did have a other, something else to bring up. I think the, this, the seniors' tax program, what, what is that again? Remind me?
Tax relief for the elderly?
And is that a rate we set, and can we increase it to offset more? Is that possible?
You know, I don't want to give you the wrong answer. The Commissioner of Revenue ministers it, I understand it's on a sliding scale based on their income?
Yeah.
As to how much they pay in taxes, or it could be none? But I'd, but I'd rather you talk to him, because he, he administers the program, he knows the ins and outs of it.
Jeff is positioned to say something.
I'm pretty familiar with that. If you want to.
So it's the tax relief for the elderly and disabled?
And disabled, correct.
You forgot disabled. What it is, is a two-pronged function. One is a function of income, and the other is a function of net worth. So if they have a lot of net worth and low income, they don't qualify. If they have up to a $30-some thousand of income with no net worth, then they qualify, and then it, uh, it, it, it helps to minimize.
Are those parameters that we suggest?
Yes. Those we changed a few years ago, if you remember.
I did, yeah.
Raised the income a little bit.
Might want to change it again.
Thank you.
To the mayor, vice mayor, and senior council, Mitch will be here this afternoon to kind of listen in on our conversation. Mitch is also coming forward on Tuesday the 14th to talk about personal property tax relief. We can certainly position for an impending meeting, a conversation about senior disabled tax relief as well.
Could, I can give you a statistic, if you like, the 791 are exempt for disabled veterans, and that would be they're totally exempt, and we're looking at 36 million, I mean, 36 million 778,500, you know, in the exemption for, for disabled veterans. Their, their property's totally, 100% disabled, they're exempt. So just, just a number, so there, there are some safety nets out there, but they're always, that's certainly something could be revisited, for, for sure. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, well, I think you did a great presentation. I appreciate your work, and I think we're pretty sure probably people are hungry for lunch, so, Mr. Benda?
Yes, uh, so, we'll break for lunch. We're projected to come back at 1:00 PM. I'm sorry that we lost a, lost a half hour there. Madam Mayor, is that, is 1:00, 1:00 o'clock a good start for, for you and your peers?
I think that's good.